This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Fox.
President.
Councilmember Casper.
Here.
Sorry. Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Leha.
Here.
Councilmember Servini.
President.
Mayor Strobin.
Here. Can you all hear me okay? No, I didn't think so either. Is that better? How many y'all? Is that better? Testing, one, two, three. All right, thank you. It's always great when we get audience participation. All right. Public comment. Clerk, can we please call up any public comments from the audience?
Alphella.
Alphella, 36016 Northwest Jenny Creek Road. Let's go down to the Triment. You know, I can't figure out why Triment wants to locate their parking lot down here on Sixth and First.
C-Train.
Oh, C-Train. I just can't figure that out. When you've got the parking lot across from Holly Park, which they've used for years. And I've talked to several people who drive big rigs and they say, shouldn't have any problem getting the bus in there. I just don't know. You know, if, you know, to spend money on a vacant lot, which is only going to be temporary. You know, once the downtown plan gets done, you know, they're going to move it, you know, to the west. It makes even less sense. If you're going to invest money in doing anything, if there's problems with the handicap places up there across from Holly Park, you know, use the money on that instead of, you know, putting something where, you know, people don't want it. You know, the only reason I can think, well, I've been told is this C-Train, you know, that's what they want. You know, and there's nothing in the questionnaire, you know, that we all felt out about where the place is, aren't they? And we're just going to go by, you know, what C-Train says. And that just, it just never sets well with me, being told by the higher ups, you know, this is the way it's got to be. But it is fall, sports season, sports are going great. Fort Vancouver has even scored two points in their football game. Very happy with that zero off there. Don't like zeros. Okay, God bless them.
Thank you, Al.
Valerie Post.
Valerie Post, 35602 Northeast Norfolk Avenue. I just wanted to give a quick thank you to Tracy for all your hard work in town, all the striping, the beauty, beautification you do for the bridges, the flags, everything. The town looks really nice. I saw you walking around the police station when that was being revamped and everything. It looks great. So, thank you for all your hard work. It's obvious that you love what you do and we're fortunate to have you.
Thank you. That was actually very nice, wasn't it?
I think we could all agree with that one.
Yeah. Thank you.
Jim Irish.
Jim Irish, 1653 East Heritage Loop, La Center, Washington. I have two items. Number one, praise. I want to thank the city for having such a wonderful public works group that's taking dang good care of our city. And from the tall grass and all the rest of that stuff, keeping it trimmed. And now, as we're going into the fall, they're going to be busier than ever, keeping the streets clear of the slippery leaves, et cetera. And they do work very hard for it. So, I want you to pass on to them, please, that I am not standing here alone thanking this public works department for all their hard work and the people running the sewer system, et cetera. So, thank you, Stacy, or Tracy, excuse me, for your group. The other thing I wanted to bring up is I received in the mail, again, which I firmly believe in, Thanksgiving food tickets for the Salvation Army. That's my individual contribution. But I would like to have the council look at possibility of sometime in December, or later November, December, of having a sponsored dinner for the homeless, for the poor, for the people in La Center or the neighborhood area that could really use help. And that, I don't mean money and I don't mean gift cards. I mean, sitting down like we do at Meals on Wheels on every Thursday night, or Thursday afternoon, and have a good time feeding them and taking care of them. That way, they know that the city, that they mean something to the city. And it's your job as an elected official to make sure that they know that, number one, you're there to listen to them and, number two, that you support them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Marty Gustafson.
Hello, Marty Gustafson, 1679 East Heightman Avenue. I'm really not prepared to speak because I came to talk about the special tax financing that may occur for the city of La Center here. I lived through that when I was working in Ridgefield and just with the atrocious roads that were being built, or that were being degraded by the construction. And it just, they still haven't caught up even with the, with the special taxes. Excuse me. But without knowing a lot about it yet, I do have a couple of other comments here. One of them is I was reading through the city code and looking for acceptance of the streets. And I know there's provisional acceptance for the roads that have been built recently that have, that take at least a year for the city then can then take them over and take over maintenance of those. If you've ever been on West 14th Avenue, that new subdivision there, that road is just hoppy, bumpy like that. So, you know, the developer went cheap on that road, paved it, they're still on construction, so it's ruining the road. And I really don't want to have my tax dollars paid for the faulty road put in by the developer. The other one that kind of irks me is, and I can't find anything in the city code regarding when utility companies come in and cut some pavement out and then they put a new patch in the road and the patch doesn't match the regular pavement, so you're bouncing over that. We've got a couple of them here in La Center. There's a great one now, just as you're going on West 10th or Northeast 10th Avenue into Ridgefield and across 279th. It drops about an inch. So, I'd like to see, like to make sure that we're watching, I don't know, maybe if the contractors have to put up a bond or something like that, so when they repair the roads, they repair them to as good condition. And then, the final thing I've got, I don't know how the taxing is going to occur, if that happens, for the special road tax. But one other thing, another thing that irks me here is I look at my car registration fees. I pay an additional $10 additional weight fee and then an additional $45 for weight fee for highway improvements. I can see that with a car. However, I also own two motorcycles. I get a $10 fee for additional weight and then vehicle weight $25 for a motorcycle. That's six or 700 pounds, you know, less than a quarter of what a car is. So, if that taxing goes through, please keep that in mind and make sure that it doesn't fall all on people that have gasoline-powered cars, some of the battery-powered cars that weigh, that weigh more, also pay there for sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. And Tracy and one of her staff members will reach out if you left your phone number there to chat with you about some of those other areas that you've mentioned as well. Um. Mayor, we, we brought that up several times. I, I'm kind of curious of where we're at with that, too. Out on, is it, is it, I can't remember. The one North Pacific Highway going out of town, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, West 14th Avenue.
Yeah.
Where across the bowl of the road?
Yes, yeah. This is one that we've, several times, and I know we were waiting on them to make repairs and they did once and it didn't work. Yeah, you know what, though? This, this is a city council meeting, so we'll, we'll take it from there. Thanks, Al. Tracy, do you have an answer for Councilmember Boyle here on that? I, I don't recall. Okay.
No, I don't have an answer at this time. I need to go out and drive it myself.
Okay, yeah, it's bad and it's been brought up several times.
Yeah, I will tell you, though, that we do have bonding. We don't sign off the bind until the road is completely turned over to the city. It's also guaranteed for two years afterwards. And so, I will make sure and reach out and give an update next council meeting as to the status and reach out to the gentleman who spoke.
And then, keep in mind, sometimes we do follow what has to be put down there and even on the city side of things. And we've had, like, humps pop up in the middle of the road, stone crick. That had nothing to do with the contractor. They were actually following the code, so were we. And it still ended up costing us money to repair, right? Because it's outside of any of that, what they're bonded for. They're following everything. It just was an incident that happened. So, there are those occasions. I, I mean, for sure, I just, this was something that would happen, like, during construction, throughout construction. Now, they're getting close to completion and stuff and it was something that I just, I brought up a few times. And I know Brian was working on it at one point and had done some follow-up with them, but I just didn't know where that ended up as well.
Yeah, I'll make sure and give a full report next council, for sure.
Thank you. Clerk, are there any other public comments from the audience?
No further public comments from the audience.
Thank you. Any public comments from those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, this is Kimberly Goheen Elbin, Patriot Life citizen of Clark County, Washington, USA. I'd like to remind the people, as we pledged our allegiance to the flag, that we are a republic and not a democracy, so vote accordingly to represent our republic. The Clark County Council announced today at the one o'clock meeting that they are making attempts to stop citizens from calling in on the phone to testify or speak. This is illegal, in my opinion, and not constitutional as they are working to take away, piece by piece, our First Amendment rights. You are Clark County citizens. People need to take time, look every week. Thursday mornings are a good time at what the Clark County Council's agendas are. They have two of them. Tuesdays and Wednesdays, there's plenty of time to speak up. We're in big trouble if we don't. And what they do from now on must be witnessed by the people while they take our First Amendment rights away, piece by piece. C-Train is part of the growth and, of course, I'm against all growth anymore. I'm against any more population pollution in our country, town of La Center. The growth has caused a tremendous amount of loud traffic also after 9:00 PM. I mean, it sounds like a freaking freeway out here off on Fourth Street. It's, it's really crazy. So, we really need to, you know, people move out here to the country and then boom, it makes it a city. So, we need to stop this. Everybody that's moved here, be thankful and let's stop this growth. Let's just build up there at I-5 corridor. I'm also asking the community to keep my son Cleve Goheen Rango and our family in prayer as he struggles through injustice brought to him by the state of Washington and the Washington State Family Court. He is one of millions who suffer from the loss of illegal capture through Child Protection Services. Another note from the Clark County Council is that they are trying to figure out a way to tax all online items you must, that you buy, such as FedEx, your Uber Eats, all the other things that you can buy online, they're trying to figure out a way to tax because people cross the river and they're losing revenue. Again, the taxes that you will see and will go forward unless we stand in assembly against these taxes, these taxes are to repay back the government, everything that they've been spending of our hard-earned tax dollars. We're in a, we've got $39 trillion in deficit. Our children will never get out of this, let alone our grandchildren. And we've got to stop this tax now, but you can't, you can't do it by just sitting. You have to look at the Clark County Council agendas every week and participate. Get your people together. Do not be afraid to assemble. It's our duty to stand up. We, we have a government here that can listen. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, Kimberly. Any other public comments from those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak. State your name and address for the record. Any other callers? Okay. Are there any public comments to be read?
No public comments to be read.
Okay, thank you, clerk. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Consent agenda. There are no requests for any items to be removed. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
They're moving and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, council. Okay. Do have proclamation tonight. And there will be a presentation. Presentation of the Disability Awareness Month Proclamation. And Kristen Wade is with us to accept. Kristen, are you, ah, there you are. I'm looking for my paperwork here, Kristen. One second. I have to find it. It's in the, what's that? Yes. Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, here we go. I will not butcher this for you, Kristen. Whereas, the year 2024 marks the 34th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act and together with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act establish the right of adults and children with disabilities to participate fully in all aspects of American society. And whereas, the city of La Center supports the goals of equity, opportunity, independent living, and economic self-sufficiency for people with disabilities. And whereas, the US Department of Labor chose this year's theme for the 79th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month as Good Jobs for All. And whereas, the theme confirms our commitment to ensure that workers with disabilities have access to good jobs every month of every year. Whereas, the principles of the Americans with Disabilities Act and Individuals with Disabilities Education Act urges citizens and to redirect their community to fulfilling the letter and spirit of the laws and asks policymakers and business leaders to redouble their efforts to benefit from increasing opportunities for meaningful employment of people with disabilities, promote employment in all sectors of our economy, expand employment opportunities for youth with disabilities, and renew our commitment to inclusive workplaces. Now, therefore, I, Thomas Strobin, Mayor, City of La Center, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Disability Employment Awareness Month. Encourage all citizens to join in this observance. Thank you.
I have some invitations for you all. Can I give them to the city clerk? Kristen Wade, 40615 Northeast Cedar Ridge Road, Amboy. So, I'm kind of close, not totally. We appreciate you doing the Employment Awareness Month proclamation. And I just want to tell you a little bit about our board. So, the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board advises and makes recommendations to Clark County Council relating to developmental disabilities issues and services. The board provides community leadership on improvement for efficiency and effectiveness of community developmental disabilities programs. Each year, we host a Disability Employment Awareness Awards. And this year, the event will be October 9th, 2024, from 4:30 to 6:00 PM at Clark College Geyser Hall. So, that's the in-person event. We'll be located there. And then, if you feel like you'd rather watch it from the comfort of your home, it's also televised on CVTV. We would love to see you there. It is a fill-your-cup kind of event where you get to celebrate with your community and employee of the year, employer of the year. So, with our program, we serve over 500 individuals with developmental disabilities and work with over 200 businesses in Clark County. So, it's, it's a great event and we hope to see you there. It's open to the public. I handed out invitations, obviously, to the board, but anyone is welcome. And so, we do ask for registration for the in-person, just so we can be prepared. You could call your registration into 564-397-2130 or ddprogram@clark.wa.gov.
Kristen, what, what time was that again?
4:30 to 6:00.
Oh, you, yeah, okay. Thank you. I'm over here trying to write it all down.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have Waste Management Composting Presentation. Selena Montgomery will be presenting. Selena?
Hi.
I don't think they can hear you at all.
Hi. It's.
Yeah, you're right there.
I know. It's a little awkward.
I did, yeah, maybe.
Okay, how's, how's that? Okay, thank you. So, good evening. My name's Selena Montgomery and I'll be joined by Pete Dubois at the end of my portion of the presentation. We work with Clark County Public Health and the Solid Waste Education and Outreach Division, and we're going to talk to you tonight about composting options. Next slide, please. So, I'm going to start us off with the We Compost Pilot Program. And the pilot program provides free curbside food waste carts at locations we call community hubs for anyone in Clark County to use. And what this use looks like is you collect your food scraps or your food waste at home and when you're ready to dispose of this food waste or food scraps, you, instead of putting it in the trash can, take it to one of these community hubs that are nearest to you, deposit them there and rinse and repeat. And why we want to keep food waste out of your trash can and ultimately out of the landfill is because this nutritious food waste would go to waste in the landfill. So, instead, we're taking these food waste carts in Clark County to our commercial composter Dirt Hugger and they are composting our food waste and turning it into a soil amendment or compost. And it's going to, it's going to go back into the ground and support future food growth. Next, two slides. Okay, awesome. So, we currently have 10 active community hubs throughout Clark County, largely in Vancouver. We are ultimately trying to move up into North County and further east of Clark County. These 10 locations are comprised of an education center, a food bank, a commercial business, and seven congregations. Congregations have been huge contributors to our pilot program and we're very appreciative of the work that they've been helping us do. If you're already excited about the pilot program, you can scan that QR code and it'll take you to our We Compost webpage where you can learn a little bit more in depth about the pilot program, about Dirt Hugger, and even request a free compost pill. All right, weight tracking. So, since 2022, we've been tracking our progress. This is how we can tell how successful the pilot program has been. In '22, we diverted just over 10,000 pounds of food waste from the landfill. In '23, just over 36,000 pounds of food waste, so we tripled that number. And in '24, as of July, we diverted over 29,000 pounds of food waste from the landfill and we're certainly on track for surpassing our '23 numbers. And all-time food waste diverted is just over 75,000 pounds of food waste and we'd certainly love if City of La Center would help us keep that number growing. All right, so I mentioned Dirt Hugger, a commercial composting facility. When we were on their site last year getting a tour, one of their site staff let us know that they could visually tell when a load from Waste Connection was being brought from Clark County because of how low contamination there is. So, there's just food waste and organic material going in. And they have a pretty extensive process for picking out all of the other stuff. And they're an organic-certified commercial composter. So, there's quite a few things that can go in there and they were giving lots of kudos to Clark County on doing a job well done. So, next steps for We Compost and City of La Center. We're working to get a community hub location in City of La Center. We have a site in mind. If anybody has any suggestions, we're certainly open and welcome to hearing them. I was on the phone with Mark Lopez with Gather and Feast Farm here in La Center and he let me know that I could let everybody else know. He would love to take your pumpkins and any other produce that's not sprayed so you can feed their very adorable Highland cows, among other animals, cute animals that they have on the farm. And I'm going to pass this over to Pete now and he will talk to you about backyard composting options.
Thank you, Selena. Yes, so the, the composting hubs that Selena talked about take all food. So, you could put your turkey carcass in there after, hopefully, you've boiled it down to make broth. You can put in your cheese, your meat, all these other things can go into those hub carts. And so, for some types of food, you can actually do that in your own backyard. And that's specifically fruits, vegetables, coffee grounds, and eggshells. So, we're also trying to improve our soil, help out with gardening, and turn those nutrients locally into compost, hopefully, in your own backyard. And so, we've got a bunch of programs. Our first four are on composting. These, this is at clarkcountycompost.org. These are webinars, so you can tune in. There's a QR code up there. We talk about backyard composting, redworm composting, lasagna composting, which is a type of mulch gardening using waste product from your gardens. And then, kashi, which is a little more niche, which is indoor composting with a little bucket. So, those are our four offerings. We'll do the next slide. And I just wanted to mention, if you come to these webinars, you qualify to get one of our compost bins. These are provided through grant dollars. They are 80 gallons. They're pretty efficient at turning out good compost. And we do field trainings as well. We're the third Saturday of every month. We're at Heritage Farm in Hazel Dell. The first Wednesday of every month, we're at the Casey site in Brush Prairie from 10:00 to 11:30 AM and we actually teach folks how to do that. Next slide. We also have worm bins. Again, the. We also have worm bins. Again, this is a smaller, really starter bin. You can make a worm bin out of pretty much anything. I've seen people use bathtubs, refrigerators, wooden boxes. But we start these up for you. They come complete with the worms. They're all ready to go. And what's amazing about these worm bins is they produce high-octane fertilizer. And so we're actually running out of fertilizer in our country. It's NPK, nitrogen, phosphorus, potassium. You get all of this from your worm casting. So if you want to not have to go by-product, you can do all your farming with your own food scrap fertilizer. And then our final one is this bokashi. This is really more suited for smaller-scale apartments, folks who want to do indoor work, condos. And so certainly, if you've got acreage, you may not want to go that route. But another option, especially for in the city, and then I'll go to the next slide. I think that's our wrap-up. So also can take any questions.
Do have a question, actually. I feel very uneducated, because I was always told you can't do meats or carcasses in any type of composting. That's how it was raised. So is that because we don't do it in our own backyard?
Thank you. We don't want to do in the backyard, but when those products go in the carts at the compost hubs, and they get picked up by the trucks, they go all the way out to the Dallasport, where there's an industrial composter, and they have a giant compost pile probably the size, almost half the height of this room, and 50 yards. It's like on an air hockey pad where they blow the oxygen and they control it all. So they can turn all that product into compost, but not in the backyard. Because we don't want rats. And we don't want odorants, and we don't want to upset neighbors.
So where is all this healthy soil going then? Is it obviously farmers buying it? Is it getting bagged up and sold to big stores for us to buy? Like, what's the primary?
So, yes. So Dirt Hugger, unfortunately, you know, it is out of the county. It's in Washington State, but the primary user there are agricultural farmers and orchardists, and they will actually spray that, I mean, spread it out on their orchard crop.
But you don't sell it to people here in Clark County? It's more like?
It does come back in a bag product, and you can buy it at Sundance Rockery. I think there's a couple other spots. Sundance is the main one. Yes.
So what's the benefit from the, you know, average homeowner to do all this extra? So what's, I mean, obviously, it's good for the environment. I get that. It creates better soil for our food to farm that's healthy for us. I understand that process. But for the people, like, where's the, I mean, it's an extra step. They have to stop and be more mindful. How do you get people to kind of change their behavior and habits to do that?
That is, that's the hundred-dollar question. That's amazing. I mean, for one, there are also issues with the ich factor. There could be fruit flies. You know, I'm very familiar with collecting food and rotting.
Even if you have a container?
Exactly, exactly. And so, yeah, it really, it's an altruistic effort. We, you know, in a landfill, things do not decay like they do in a compost pile. So there's no oxygen. They cover it with dirt every day. They squash it all out, and it basically just sits there in tubes. So we're trying to just keep that nutrient cycling. It is going to take an extra step. Hopefully, we're all in it together.
Sure, sure.
So you pointed out a very good point.
And this is free to the public, right?
And that is one way that we're trying to encourage people, yes. So the hubs are free.
You guys hear that? Free.
Well, and I think, I think the other upside.
The collection pails are free.
Oh, I was just going to say, an upside of it too is that it, you know, reduces how much you're putting in your garbage. Therefore, you can have more space for other things, you know? Because some of us, one garbage a week is not enough. So if we take out the recycling, take out the compost, well, now it's more manageable. I could see that being a benefit.
And Waste Connections does offer a monthly garbage can, so if you take out all that ich factor, you could save money, but that's playing the long game. And so I don't want to take anything away if you want to add.
I take mine down to Casey's house. He doesn't know it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your volunteer.
All right. Next up, La Center School District update. Peter Rosenkrantz will be presenting. Peter?
Good evening. I just want, we're a month into school, and I just want to take an opportunity to step up and just update you how we're going. I know it's going fast. I have the same, I looked at that this morning. My gosh, we are truly, like, within a couple days of one month.
Slow down.
Trying to slow down. But unfortunately, as much as I try to get my own children not to grow up so fast, they seem to make that happen. You know, fall sports is one of the things to behold. High school, middle school sports. We have cross-country team, volleyball team, football. Soccer, thank you. How can I forget soccer? I love soccer.
Cross-country?
I said cross-country. But if you're tired of professional sports or collegiate sports and tired of all the money, join in and watch a high school game. It's the last bastion of true sport. Kids playing their hearts out on the field and representing their community. Our first fall football game last Friday was packed, and...
That wasn't a game, Peter.
Well, you can't, I'm not going to apologize for being good. But that being said, you know, there's some great games coming up. Volleyball team's on top of the world, and football is just good stuff happening for kids. As you know, I will always talk also academics. This is the boring part of my speech, which hasn't changed since I've started coming up here. We will continue to focus on reading, continue to focus on mathematics. That's what we expect of our schools, and we will continue to keep that focus. And then forgive me if I'm repeating myself on this one, but we have doubled our CTE courses. We did add a culinary program, was one of the more widely anticipated classes. A lot of students signed up. Those classes are packed. We were able to convert an old home ec room to more of an industrial light kitchen. And I know they just did some cookies, and they're working on biscuits and gravy, but they, if nothing else, they are looking, they're learning skills to cook at a minimum. But even better, they could exit high school with skills to be able to step into a kitchen and help out and work and have those job-ready skills. Additionally, we're working on adding a tiny homes shop behind the school near the ropes course, between the ropes course and the baseball field. The hope is eventually, once we get, so we have the basic construction, then we have the shed building, and that third tier is tiny homes and taking containers and converting them into homes. And the Vancouver Housing Authority has already agreed to purchase homes to help out with homelessness. Whoops, I'm messing with your sign. My apologies. Additionally, we have also advanced our AP coursework for those that want a different rigor that tends to prepare them for college. But we also have, we have a biology course that is AP certified, CTE certified, and they're getting high school requirements for biology in there as well. Because many of our kids, trades isn't just, I'm going to go swing a hammer trades. There are many trades that you also still need to go to college for as well. And that's why I continue to say, like, grade 13, career-ready, or at the very least, ready to go on to further education, whether that's a trade school, apprenticeship, college. The one thing I do have in October is a State of the District address. While I'll talk about our budget, I'll talk about enrollment, talk about our scores. They're still not where we want them to be, but we're continuing to grow, and that's the focus. A big emphasis with the level of assessments and how we're diagnosing what we need for our kids, we're able to dive into specifics within mathematics. And hey, this is an area they need help with. And then we detail or tailor a lesson to meet that need and fill that hole and move on. COVID left significant holes in our learning, and we're still working through that. But we're making gains, and we are dedicated to it and not giving up on the idea that the basic expectations, our kids need to be able to read, and our kids need to be able to do math, and they need to be productive citizens by grade 13. So that's really what I have for tonight. I just want to keep bringing it forward that one of our greatest resources in this community are children, and we want to support our families as they support their children. And so, thank you. I'd also just encourage you to reach out if you have other questions. You have a similar board across from you in the school board and serving similar roles, only governing the school dynamic. And we just had our meeting last night, very successful, great public input and interaction. And we just continue to move forward for kids and families in our community. So, any questions for me?
When is the State of the District?
It's the hour before our October board, regular board meeting. And I have to, I have to look. I have a date, but I don't have it off the top of my head. It's usually the third, I'm not going to even guess. The regular board meeting in October is right before it. We'll advertise that out. We'll get that out, definitely.
I have a question, going back to what you said at the beginning about the program with the kiddos with the cooking. Are they also getting their food handler's card today? Oh, great. Awesome. Yeah.
So there are two ways you can get a food handler's card.
That's a test, and that takes some understanding, and they could walk out with that. I mean, that's a big help for them.
And even use that prior to graduating.
Right, exactly, exactly. I know, and to them, when they read that as a requirement for a job, they get overwhelmed, and they think, oh, that looks hard. And it's like, no, it's just some videos and some studying, kind of like driver's ed. So, yeah, that's great.
We have two ways kids are getting their food handlers from it. We have a coffee cart that operates, working on those business skills. We have a student that was almost 16 and ready to drop out, like, they were done. They were like, they had moved here, and we engaged with our business venture. They stuck around, picked up credits. They're on track to graduate. I mean, we don't give up on kids.
Yeah.
Keep pushing to get that graduation. So, good questions. Thank you.
So continuing on about the culinary program, is that something that's designed to stand alone? Or is it a building block towards the Cascadia Tech Academy Culinary Program?
Great question. So I work, Joan Houston is director at Cascadia Tech. And so every time we add a program that could impact them, I also connect with her. The demand is so high for culinary and construction that we could both graduate high volumes of kiddos and not scratch the surface of the job, of the needs that are out there. And so the difference is Cascadia Tech, you need to be a junior or senior to go. We can have 9 through 12 take culinary coursework. So it could either launch them into Cascadia Tech, which is truly an industrial kitchen where they're going to learn those skills, or it could just launch kids into local aspects, or it could just simply teach them to cook, which Home Ec of old, what we used to have, this is, we have a financial literacy course with mathematics, and now we have a culinary aspect. What I hope to do is incorporate business components to this, as well as, I think it'd be really cool if they baked bread and took it to Meals on Wheels.
That'd be so cool. Yeah.
So, or as people like to say, mo. Anyway, sorry.
No, you're fine. I just had another question. I don't know if you know much or remember the construction camp they had in August. I think the high school put it on. I saw that. That looked so amazing. I told my boys about it, and I'm like, I'm signing up for construction camp. They're like, no, mom. I was like, this is awesome. And then I went back to sign them up, and it was full. I mean, it looks, yeah. So my question is, are you going to do more? Do you know if that's, there's more of that next summer? And that was so awesome, and I regretted not to. My boys were like, yes. And I'm like, no, you little stinkers. I'm like, you need to go.
Well, in this first year, we weren't quite sure. We could have guessed, but weren't quite sure. It filled in three days, just like that. And there wasn't a cost. We did it.
Right.
And that's part of it, a week. I mean, as a parent, I jump at that.
Yeah.
And it goes away for a week. Sweet.
Yeah.
But the product was four picnic tables. And these are not chintzy picnic tables. They are beefy tables. And so we have two in the courtyard for students to use, and then we have two up at the stadium for folks with concessions they can sit at the picnic tables. And we got them out there, and my maintenance crew said, they're already vandalized. They're already vandalized. And they took pictures, and they sent it to me, and I said, that's not vandalism. That's the kids who made the table signed the bottom. It's like, we're good. It's kids being proud of their work.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's...
Maybe it was in cursive.
Yeah. Some fancy writing there. But those are good. And thanks for bringing that. That's the thing.
Yeah, I'm hoping to see more of that.
We've shifted. We have this process where we say something positive at our meetings, and we shifted it after public comment, because sometimes public comment isn't super positive. And then as you launch in your meeting, it changes the tenor of your meeting. And so we shifted "say something positive" to "after public comment." And I, that went for 20 minutes. There were so many things to share that folks were talking about. We did walkthroughs with the board to look at our reading program, the elementary. We did, we had the construction component, where we had the camp for the connection of kids. We're going to build, I didn't bring it, but we do toolboxes with 4th grade. We're going to bring 4th grade students up to the high school, build these toolboxes to get them excited about construction and give them options. My whole goal is that they can see the world around them and know options they have. And they choose, not me, they choose where they want to go, because they'll find their passion and what they want to be when they grow up.
Totally. Cool. Good work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. Appreciate you very much. We do have a Capital Projects presentation. Tracy Coleman will be presenting. Tracy? Hard to follow that one up, right?
Okay, well, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to everybody who's come here tonight and that thank you for the public comments, the positive public comments. I appreciate that, because what a state is that you don't always get anything positive. And while it's not needed, it's very much appreciated when you hear that, and I appreciate that more, you know? Spider, sorry. So I thank you for that, and it is my job to do. I get paid to do what I'm doing, and I'm very appreciative of it. I love it. It's my cup of tea, I guess I would say. So, and then the other thing I wanted to share is when Selena, when she was in here, she was saying, am I in the right place? Because she heard positive feedback. So I would encourage more positive feedback. It's good to hear what we need to work on. It's also good to hear what we're doing that's right. So I would encourage that as well. In regards to composting, I've found that it's difficult to compost because of the odor that it creates. So what I've found for myself is if you have a small bucket or a bowl that you can keep in the refrigerator, and then if you just put your compost in there, and when it starts to get full, if you do smell an odor, you can put a little bit of baking soda on that. Or if you have an extra freezer, which is what I do, I have a grain bucket, like a horse grain bucket. I just throw mine in there, and then once a week, you can just take it and throw it in the compost pile. You don't have to worry about the baking soda. So if you're interested in that, that's something that you can do too. A lot of people don't think about that. But, okay, now I'm ready to talk about the Capital Project.
I'm excited for this one.
Well, yeah.
This was a lot of work, you guys.
Well.
I think you'll be excited once you see some of the stuff that the city is working on.
Okay, so basically, this is for Public Works, and there's kind of some carry-forward projects throughout this presentation, but I'll just kind of start, just going to kind of hit some highlights. We have a junction sign that we're doing up at the junction, and we're asking for that to be carried forward. Basically, it's up there by the minute mark area. And so we're going to put a sign in there, so kind of like the reader board that we have down here at the Stern Wheeler. So we're just going to carry that forward and work on that sign for this next year. And then also the horizontal curb and roadway departure safety improvement. We're going to continue to work on that for the design, so we can go out for some grant funding. That's a project that we're doing. And then the, what was, I can't read that, Media for Odor Control, that's always a good thing, right? So we actually had, we're asking for that to be carried forward too, because we had availability and the funding, but we had a hard time getting the supply. So when we get that, we're going to actually order it for all three chambers that we have at the wastewater plant, so we won't be in a situation like this before we've had to wait a year. And then also the storm drain rehabilitation design, that's the one that's actually that we own in the casino parking lot. And so we're working on finishing up that design to come up with some solutions, because we have a collapsed line in there. And I think you guys are aware that right there off that casino parking lot, that we had a collapsed line. And so we repaired that, an emergency repair. So this is kind of, what are we going to do to prevent it to fail in the parking lot as well? And community development, good job, good job. Community development. Community development, we are actually working on the subarea plan. And we are in the midst of that. We're actually having a CAC meeting here in the near future. And so we're asking to carry forward forty thousand dollars to continue with this process for our Timmins Landing and our downtown two point O. And then we have a hundred fifty asked for the budget, which is still all within the contract. We're just saying that we're just kind of moving this forward from this year into next year to continue down the process. So that's for, again, the Timmins Landing area and the downtown two point O. And then in regards to community development, that isn't the one that I have, I have a different one. It's forty, that's, that might be, that might be an old one. So let's just, I'll just explain to the, the audience what's going on. So we have a live document that I work on. So anytime I get updates, I just feed it in the live document. So listen to what I'm saying and you can look at that, but just listen to what I'm saying. Because I have the most recent one and I'll get, make sure there's an updated one on the website. So I apologize that it was in my error that I didn't give the most recent one to there to be able to be printed out. So after this slide, you can leave that slide, you can leave that slide there. There's, after this slide, there's another slide that I added and it's in regards to community development, this comprehensive plan. So we talked about the subarea plan, which is Timmins Landing and downtown two point O. Then we also have the comprehensive plan that we're working on that I added that slide in there. And again, my apologies. But right there, we're asking for a carry forward for those funding to, to finish up the comprehensive plan. It's supposed to be finished by December at the absolute latest. And we're working with Clark County and WSP to do that. We're hoping it'll be completed by June, but there's no guarantee, guarantee when you're working with the county. So probably I'm gonna say, to be safe, we're gonna say December. But we're hoping to have it done by June. But if Clark County finishes early, then we'll finish early as well, because we're dependent on, relying on some of their feedback. So now you can say, go to the next slide, thank you very much. Okay, so we, we, Angie, who works in our planning department, filled out, there was a grant that was available from the Washington State Department of Commerce. And she filled out the grant paperwork and we received a grant for a hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars. And what that is, is to go from paper to digital. So when somebody wants to fill out an application or any type of permitting or tracking, instead of doing everything by paper and, and, and if somebody isn't here like, oh, we have to go through their file drawers and such. Now we can have everything online, have it digital and people can go online and do it. They don't have to come in here if they don't want to, or they can come in here, they can do it on their phone, whatever way they wanna do it. So anyway, we received that and we just did receive the letter. So I just wanted to give thanks to Angie for filling that out and let you guys know that that is gonna be a long process. It's gonna take at least a year to transfer all of our files in there, but we're gonna be starting on that. And it says no award letter, but I did get the award letter today. So we did receive the award letter and I actually, I think I highlighted something on there. I just basically said it was for a hundred ninety-four five, which I have up there. And there is no money out of pocket as well. So that also covers our time for doing some of the transition, for getting the paperwork, for the scanning and stuff. So they'll cover some of those costs as well, which is kind of nice, so. Okay, next slide. Hope it's what I got. It is, okay. Okay, so Junction Roundabout, La Center and Paradise Park. So we are actually working on, right now, we awarded it a couple council meetings ago, we awarded to HHPR. And that is to do the design for the Junction Roundabout, which is up at the junction where the Minute Mart is. And basically, the, the tribe, we have an agreement with the tribe and they're gonna reimburse us for a cost up to six hundred fifty thousand for the design. But with that being said, we have to pay for the money upfront. And so when we get the design at ninety percent complete, which will be the end of, end of next year, they'll reimburse us up to three hundred twenty-five thousand. The other three hundred twenty-five thousand will go towards like matching funds if we go for a grant to do that roundabout. So they're also contributing three hundred twenty-five thousand to that as well. But we won't be able to be reimbursed for that until we complete the construction project. So while it's kind of, we have to front the money ahead of time, we are able for reimbursement up to the six hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is kind of nice. So we're anticipating completion of the roundabout design in December next year. And then what we'll do is we'll go out for grants, because it's easier to get a grant when you have a design at a hundred percent complete. So we'll go ahead and, and move forward with grants for that. Fourth Street Signal Project, that's gonna be presented tonight, is that correct, Tony? Okay, and so he'll talk about that. We have, that went out to bid and so that is all grant funded. So when I say no money out of pocket, as everybody is aware, and if you're not, anytime you have a grant, you do have money out of pocket, but then you get reimbursed for it. So sometimes you have to float it, you have to, you have to make sure you budget for it. So if you have a grant for seven hundred thirty-five thousand, you have to make sure you have that in your budget, seven thirty-five thousand to pay your contractors. And then when you pay them, you submit that paperwork and then the grant folks reimburse you for that money. So there's kind of a lag time somewhere thirty, sixty, even sometimes ninety days before you get that money back. So you have to make sure that you have the money in your reserves to be able to float those funds. So with that Fourth Street Signal Project, we estimate starting that in October of this year. And then we could, we'll have it completed by December of last year, uh, next year. And why I say that is because there's a really long lead time for the signal itself and so we have to get that ordered. So there's probably, I think, a ten month turnaround right now for that. Yeah. The next one is a Fourth Street Widening and Breezy Creek Culvert Replacement Project. And so we're working on right away acquisition right now. We have three, I think we have three properties right now that we don't fully have the right away acquisition for that we're in negotiation with. And so we're asking for a carry forward of a hundred ten thousand dollars for the spending that we have not completed spending in two thousand twenty-four. Carry that into two thousand twenty-five and we have an additional seventy-seven thousand dollar ask that we're doing. We had some change orders and that was due to us having to separate the two projects. It used to be the, the Signal and the Fourth Street Widening Breezy Creek and we had to separate them out. So the additional seventy-seven thousand is because we have two sets of plans, two sets of drawings, two sets of bid documents, so on and so forth that we have to go for. So that's where the small additional cost comes in. The total process, the total project cost is about fifteen million dollars. And of that, we have about thirteen million dollars in grants. And we're waiting to hear for a couple more grants that are coming in. So in, and even though, again, we have to float this. So as a city, we have to, we have to pay this fifteen million dollars, not all in one year, but we have to pay, you know, five million dollars out and then we get reimbursed for that five million. So we have to be able to pay for that. So that's why it's important to keep that money in reserves. And then the other thing is probably out of pocket, I don't think we have any money out of pocket in it if we get all our grants. So we shouldn't have any money technically out of pocket, we'll be reimbursed for all of it. Then we have the Pacific Highway Shared Use Path and that one has a project design cost of two hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. And right now we have a design grant for two hundred thousand dollars of that. So we have about seventy-nine thousand dollars out of pocket. And that's out of pocket, meaning that we are actually paying for that. The construction cost is estimated at three point four million. We actually have no grant money except for a seven hundred thousand dollar transportation grant that would go towards that three point four million dollars of construction cost. So we are submitting for grants. We have the carbon emissions reduction grant, which we tentatively might be able to get. And that's a million dollars. It hasn't been awarded yet, it might be taken away, we don't know yet, so we're kind of on hold. We have applied for, and I say we, I'm gonna say Tony, has applied for the Regional State Mobility Grant for two point seven eight million, a Safe Routes to School for two point seven million and Transportation Improvement Board for five hundred thousand. You might say, well, wait a minute, that totals over three point four million that you need. Well, you never get all your grants. So we're gonna, we're gonna keep going and we, we have a pretty good idea that we probably won't get one. So maybe we'll get the two others and we'll be able to fund that project. So as of right now, we only have the money for the design, but you always, when you have your design done, you always have a better opportunity to score higher on the grant when you submit that. Streets, so as you guys know, I think it was the last, yeah, September eleventh, such a good day. On September eleventh, it's on my birthday, just so you know. So I did pavement preservation. I provided that street preservation project and kind of gave an outline of what it really costs to maintain a street and the three different options that you would use here within the city to maintain your streets and those three different costs. And with that being said, we have budgeted a hundred and five thousand dollars for our, in our street budget. And that is for the possibility of doing a, a match for a grant, which is a million dollars, which is to do the Aspen Avenue and Tenth Avenue project. So if you go from fourth and turn up Aspen and go all the way to tenth, you take that. And then you go from Aspen on tenth and go back out to Pacific? That's the name of the road? Yeah, Pacific. So if you look at those two roads, that total cost is a million dollars to do those two roads for a grinding overlay. It, you know, you, you look at the cost of what it cost, and that's just a grinding overlay. That's not a complete full depth reclamation. That's just, let's get our, our pavement back in, in good shape. So I budgeted a hundred five thousand dollars for a match if we get the TIB funding for that. And I'm hopeful that we'll get that, we'll know by November. If we don't get it for that, then I'll use that hundred and five thousand dollars for something else. I'll find a road in the category list of as far as what's one of the worst roads here? How long is it, how wide is it? Where, how far can I put this money for one of the roads in La Center? Then hot mix asphalt patching. So as you know, we go through during the winter time and we patch with cold mix, any type of potholes that we have. Because you don't, you don't use hot mix asphalt in the rainy winter months, so you use cold mix. And then as you know, as you drive around throughout the winter months and you have snowplow and everything else, then that pops out, you still get a bigger pothole. So what we do is we like to go through and cut out those holes and then put some hot mix asphalt in there so it'll hold. So we have about twenty thousand dollars budgeted for that. We have a bid out right now for that, for the patching this year. And so we're waiting for those to come back. I think they're coming back in October. And then the additional is road maintenance is anywhere between a hundred twenty-four to two hundred thirty thousand dollars, depending on whether or not we get that grant that we'll be looking for to spend in our streets. Okay, ADA Transition Plan. So Washington State Department of Transportation actually is requiring any municipality that has over fifty employees, they have to have an ADA Transition Plan. All these grants that we apply for, you see all these grants that Tony applied for, this fifteen million dollars or thirteen million dollars that we have coming in? All, there's all in these grant applications that says, do you have an ADA Transition Plan? And check the box, yes or no? It will come to the point where if you don't have a plan, they won't give you a grant. So right now, we can start on this ADA Transition Plan, not start, we can do an ADA Transition Plan, which is a document. It's about a fifty page document. And what you do is you do a full assessment of your municipality. You go out and you look at all your sidewalks, your, your ADA access on each of your corners into buildings, public buildings, so on and so forth. And then you put a plan together and you say, how are we gonna make this so we're ADA accessible throughout our community? And then you work on a game plan of, like, if you're doing a road, you make sure that you hit that corner. If it's not to ADA accessibility standards with the current slope, you go and you replace that ADA access on that corner. So when I'm doing the Aspen Avenue and Tenth Avenue, I look at all the curbs, the curb and sidewalks and I update those ramps that aren't to code today. So with this plan, it gives you higher score points when you apply for grants. So right now, you can get one done for twenty-five thousand dollars. If you want to wait three, four, or five years and say, no, I don't want to do it, we're gonna move forward, you're gonna probably end up spending fifty thousand dollars. The reason I know that is because I've been there and done that. So I think it's better for the size of the community we are now to go ahead and move forward and get a plan in place for twenty-five and you just update it every couple of years. So I'm asking for twenty-five thousand dollars to start an ADA Transition Plan that will help us score higher on grant applications as well. Community Center remodel, so we have a grant from the State Department of Commerce and that is two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we have out to bid right now, a remodel for the community center that we'll be doing and those bids are due back on November fifth. We, due to the community center bookings, we'll go ahead and do the remodel starting sometime in November, December. And what we'll probably end up doing, depending on the contractor, is we'll work on the restrooms inside, because there's restrooms outside that we can access. And then when the restrooms inside are done, we can make sure that those are available during these events that we already have scheduled in the community center. And then we can have the contractor go out and work on the outside restrooms. And then we'll finish it up in January, February, when we don't have that community center booked. So we don't have any anticipated funds except for holding and paying for the two hundred fifty thousand dollars till we can get reimbursed for it. So there's no cost out of pocket to us on that as far as what our match is. Okay, anybody need a bathroom break? Oh, just make sure, okay.
Do you?
All right, no, no, I'm, I'm good to go. Okay, I have any regular audio, so. Okay, Parks and ADA Access, I'm talking a little bit, a lot about that today. So we had, I'm asking for a carryover, we had twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted for a dock this last year. And we're asking for that to be carried forward. I talked to the mayor and I, I asked if we could go a different route. And, and this is a route that I would like to go. And that route is to make an ADA accessible ramp in our community. And there's good reasons for that, but I want to show you a YouTube video real quick and let you watch this.
Travis Mills, retired staff sergeant, the ASEC, everyone. So what we do is bring in veterans that have sustained some kind of injury, whether it be combat related or service connected. And we bring them and their families out to main, to our retreat here. We built this one hundred percent handicap accessible place. And when it came down to the waterfront, what we were wanting to do, we needed to find a great partner that could really meet our needs. Easy Dock stepped up, they understood, we needed something stable. When they came out and saw our project and realized we wanted to do a lot of water things on the lake here, kayakging or canoeing, they understood it.
The Easy Launch System provides access on the water for people of all abilities. And I thought it would be a great chance for the Travis Mills Foundation to allow veterans and their families to get back out on the water.
We had fifty-seven veterans and their families come this summer and every single family was able to get out in the water. Using a system like an Easy Launch, it makes sure that we take away some of those barriers that veterans face, especially if they're facing some kind of disability.
For me, it's kind of hard to be able to get in and out of the kayak. I have my arms on and legs off. So someone has to literally pick me up, put me in or drag me out. But with the Easy Launch, I can scoop myself right off of it, as well as paddle just a little harder, I can shoot most part right up it. So to watch a father toss their three-year-old daughter in the kayak all by themselves with no legs and be able to use their hands to push off, take the daughter for a battle. And then come back and shoot right back up there with no hands, not to rely on anybody, because they have the ability to go up and down the Easy Launch. Truly is a remarkable moment.
Yes, we have obstacles that we face every day. But the launch, it makes it feel like, you know, we don't have a limitation. You do it by yourself and it doesn't take a lot of strength, so it's a blessing.
One of the biggest things is how stable it is. I mean, it's, you know, six hundred square feet float and like, so we've had fifteen, twenty people on it and no issues whatsoever.
Seeing the veterans and their families on the dock was, to me, probably one of the most rewarding things I've ever done in, in my life. When I get choked up when I leave here, I really would, I'd literally get choked up seeing that a daughter or a son or even a spouse is able to be back out on the water. Doing things that I take for granted because of the Easy Launch System.
A lot of recommend it because it's an awesome product. People can use it with ease. It's not a complicated system. It takes a lot of the backbreaking work out of kayaking with people that are like me. And it's just one of the systems that helps our families get in and out of the water quick and easy and makes them feel more independent, more confident in their abilities.
So with this.
Most people have no clue that in twenty twenty-three, the best way to make money on Amazon is not with physical products. It's Amazon's other company.
Okay. So the best way to make money on Amazon, no, anyway. Okay, so the reason why I wanted to show you guys that is because the only place in, in this area that I have found that has a dock like this is, a seasonal floating dock is in Seaside, Oregon. And so there isn't one of these docks, if you go up and down. We have a lot of waterways around here. We have the Lewis River, the Columbia River, not the Snake, what's the other river we have? Can you turn me up a little? I can't hear myself. Gotta be able to hear myself, there we go. So anyway, but I, I just think this is, this is something that would be good for La Center to be known for. We're talking a difference in the pricing of, you know, seven to twelve thousand dollars. We're not talking about a big money. We have park impact fees that we can use to spend this money on and that's what they're there for. I just think it's a great item to have in our community, something to, that we should boast about. So anyway, this is something that I'm recommending that we do this type of dock. It can be taken out during the winter time. I will absolutely work with Army Corps of Engineers to get this installed and go from there. So that's an ask that I'm asking for council to approve the thirty, thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven thousand dollars for this, this dock.
I just want to say, I think it's a great idea. It looks awesome. I love the idea of, you know, including everyone, especially when we've talked about doing this at the playground at Holly Park.
Yeah.
Is transitioning that. It also seems like it's not just for severe disabilities. It could be great for people that have back problems or just that, you know, getting up and down is tough. It couldn't be just, yeah, natural, like, it could help a lot of people who wouldn't otherwise maybe do those water sports because of all of that extra. because of all of that extra, you know, work. So it looks like it could be used by lots of people.
Yeah. One of the things I want to, um, just share with you is the biggest challenge that you have when you have a dock like that, that everybody wants to see is kids playing on it. And lots of kids playing on it, jumping on it, jumping off of it and not making it accessible. So I just want everybody to be aware that just because you put that in, doesn't mean that people are going to respect that. And doesn't mean that you won't have kids playing on it and running on it and jumping off the rails. So it, it's important to, that you sign it and you make it so it's accessible and that we as a community police it and make sure that, tell people that, hey, you know, that's not to play on. That's for this. But it, it is a challenge, um, and it can cause you some havoc, no matter what kind of dock you put out there, whether it's ADA or not. So I just want to give you fair warning that when you start to put a dock in a community, you will have people that will not obey the rules and you will have people that will abuse it. And I just want everybody to be aware of that. So it is a, a cost that you put in there and you may run into problems that will be, uh, working with the police department on. So just an FYI. It might even take some, some code change, some municipal code change. So.
Tracy, real quick on, on that, I worked on a project uh, that was going to be a replacement boat dock and boat house on the Columbia River. And the engineering costs and the permitting costs were
Astronomical.
unbelievably high. And it, it ended up that by the time we spent 50 some thousand dollars on just permitting and, and engineering, that the rest of the project was so far over budget that we had to scrap it. So have we started looking at what the engineering?
So we don't need engineering for this because of the fact it's already a pre-engineered product and that is the actual cost for that pre-engineered product. And so we submit that product to the Army Corps of Engineers when we do that. If this was a dock that was like $10,000 or less, we actually can get an exemption, showing an exemption. But since this is, we're in a $30,000 range, we will actually have to go get a, uh, go through SEPA and get a, a permit and go through the Army Corps of Engineers. The permitting is not going to be anywhere in the $50,000 range. I can guarantee you that, but I have looked into that and, um, we'll make sure and bring that back to council.
Is there any requirement for pilings, driving pilings?
Um, this one doesn't require pile driving. It has some pipe that you put in there. So it's not a full official pile. And that's where you get into some of the problems with Army Corps of Engineers, especially if you're going out in the water. If you put it up on the shoreline and you can put it in there and, and it makes it removable, you should be pretty easy. So this one is made for, made for that.
Good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, parks. So in regards to parks for some general, I have expanding the stage at Stern Wheeler. It's a little small for some of the needs that we've had in the past. So we have a $2,000 park impact fee asked for that spending. Uh, pickleball courts. So, you know, we have the two tennis courts out at Holly Park. And so you can make two pickleball courts out of one tennis court. So my idea is, you know, we resurface the, um, basketball court, we can resurface the tennis court, and then we can resurface the other tennis court to be applicable for two pickleball courts. So we could have three different activities there in that one area. So, um, that's kind of possibly PIF funds. I need to double check that because of the fact that if I'm changing it to a pickleball court, I think I can use park impact fees, which are sitting there in a fund. If I can't, then it would be a $6,000 ask from the general fund. So that's one of the, um, slides I have here for you. Okay. Park trail. So we have, um, the listener, uh, bottoms trail. We're asking for a carry for it to $65,000. This was from last year's. Um, we are working with Clark County Bottoms for a transfer of the property over. And the reason why the $65,000 is in there is because there was a grant that Clark County had, and we may have to pay part of this grant to be able to get that trail system there. So that's what that, that's about. And so it would be, um, for getting it transferred into our name based on what Clark County has to do for permitting. And so that's what the $65,000 is for there. But we'll have to give you more information there because we're still working with Clark County on that. Did you want to make comment on that?
Yeah, actually I do. Um, uh, the taking over the bottoms is because we already maintain the bottoms. The public works go out there. Dave Pettit does a lot of the mowing and taking care of it. And, uh, we have to ask permission to do anything out there. And when we were, did a walk through last year, uh, we couldn't even see the birds. And so we asked, hey, can we chop down some of the grass in front of the bird watching area? And that was a no. So it, it didn't make sense to have even a bird watching area at that point. So we decided that we wanted to go after ownership of it. So we don't have those type of obstacles. And we can maintain the, the, the area that is next to the center.
Okay. And then on facilities, we have the garage that's right out here on the parking lot. So we are looking at converting that into an actual space to be able to rent out for office space. And so that'll be about a $215,000 remodel. Uh, the return on your investment by the time you collect your revenue, when you rent it out will be within nine years. It'll pay itself. And the public workshop, um, we're looking at building a new.
Real quick, Tracy, when she was talking about the garage and such, that's right here outside of city hall. They're used just for storage. There's, and it's storage of excess goods that we are actually sending out to auction, right?
Yes, that we're putting into auction.
So it's just sitting there and we've got tenants that would really like to rent office space and we don't have it. So by taking those garages and turning them to offices, we've got tenants that'll actually rent from them. And that's where the ROI is, uh, after nine years.
Well, not turning them to offices. You mean just companies who want to use it as storage?
No, no, office space. Yeah. Taking the garage doors out and converting it to office space.
Yeah, remodel and everything.
I see. Okay.
HVAC and everything.
I see. Cool. Oh, I thought you meant like, it's a storage, but okay. Cool and office.
And then, uh, the next one, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, the next one is for the public workshop. Uh, so we have a current shop right there, uh, that's at our public works facility that is inadequate. We have equipment that we need to put undercover. It, it maintains our equipment. You know, if you put a car in a garage versus leaving it out in the elements, it's going to last much longer, um, keeping it undercover. And then we also have, um, an area that we need to work on our equipment at bay. And then we also need to be able to put in a lift, so on and so forth. So the guys aren't putting it up on car ramps, you know, some of this equipment right now. So we're looking at adding the new public workshop. We actually have money in our REIT funding that is, that is designed to spend for this. And we have a million dollars sitting in our REIT funds. And so that's where that, and that's your real estate excise tax. So that's where this money would be coming from. Plus we have, uh, $250,000 in our capital fund balance. So we'd be demolishing the small garage that's out there, building another garage that's exactly like the one that's there. Um, and then we would have two, unable to put all, uh, an area able to put all of our equipment to be able to work on the equipment, so on and so forth. And right now we have run out of space. So we're kind of putting equipment here and there. So this would give us an area to put all of our equipment in.
Well, and to top that off, we also, we're, we're out of room. And so we were looking at actually moving public works. And the costs are astronomical, right?
For land.
Buy property and put buildings on it. So we came up with the idea of just expanding the shops on the property that's there and try to utilize every square foot of it.
And then we have, this is, this is a, an estimate that came in. I need to get some more estimates. This is an estimate that had come in. And, um, we have a tile roof here on, on city hall and it is leaking. And so we had an estimate that came in last year for $250,000 to replace it. Now please, uh, when you look at that and you think $200 quarter million to replace a roof, well, remember we have to pay prevailing wage and it is a tower roof and tower roofs are heavier. So when you, you take all the material off of a tower roof and you put some other type of roof on, um, it is going to be a larger cost, especially with the prevailing wage. Um, but I, that isn't a final, final number, but I think that would be the highest number that we would have come in. So that's where that, that cost is coming from. And that actually is out of, um, the capital fund balance. We'd be spending money out there. Okay. Then for public works, um, we have a mower, a 21 inch Honda mower that we use to mow all the hillsides and everything on amphitheater. Our current one is 10 years old. So we're asking for $2,000 for a new mower. And then a chipper, we currently rent or we borrow a chipper. So we're looking at, um, spending $35,000 for a chipper that we have that we own ourselves. So we aren't dependent on others to maximize our efficiency. Mobile air compressor, we use that for blowing out the areas for crack sealing and for blowing out the irrigation lines. So we currently rent or borrow, borrow that as well. So we're asking for $20,000 for a mobile air compressor. This is one that you tow behind, uh, your truck. And then also a street sweeper. Instead of buying a new street sweeper, we'd like to do repairs on the existing street sweeper. And we think we can get a five-year return on our investment, um, by spending $20,000 to, uh, replace some parts and upgrade our current sweeper to keep it going for another five years instead of spending, you know, half a million dollars on a new sweep, street sweeper. And then we're looking at, uh, getting rid of two pickups, a 1996 Chevy 1500 and a 2004 Dodge pickup, which is not running. And replacing it with, uh, two new pickups, three quarter ton pickups. We'll probably look at diesel. It's whatever we can get on the state bid and both those trucks are, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars for two vehicles of $50,000 apiece. And then, um, we're also looking at replacing the bed, um, for our Ford F-350, which is the 2008, because it's currently corroded out. And we use that for our snow and ice removal equipment. And so that'll be about $7,000 to put a new bed on the truck and then replace our sander, because our, um, sander is busted and that's actually going in the auction. If anybody wants it. Anyway, so that's going in there and that'll go on back of the, uh, F-350 and that's, uh, $15,000 for a new sander. And then we're looking for the forward post auto lift, which I told, told you about in the new shop that we'll be building. And that's so we can do our preventive maintenance on our vehicles. And it's mainly for ergonomics and safety for our, our staff to be able to get underneath vehicles versus, like I said, driving it up on ramps, what we do right now, which really isn't, is a not a safe for the, the amount of weight that these vehicles weigh. If anybody works and is mechanic, you, you don't want to drive these big trucks and stuff up on ramps. You, you want them up on a, a nice lift. So we're looking for $10,000 for a lift and then crack sealer. So our crack sealer that we use around town is a 1993. So it is what, how many years old is that? 30 some years old. So we're actually, we can't get parts for it anymore. We had to have hoses made for it. So we're asking to replace the crack sealer too. And that's a $20,000 ask. Our sewer funds. So, um, we're looking at doing a rate study. The last rate study was done about six years ago by Paul Lewis, who was here at the city. And, um, so we're looking at doing a rate study and it's about a $67,000 cost for a sewer fund. Um, and then we have the general sewer plan that we're looking for an additional 35. And that's part of incorporating that into, they incorporate the rate study into the sewer plan. And then we have some, um, updates to the general sewer plan that need to be done as well. So we're looking at a $35,000 ask to finish that general sewer plan. And then replace the media, which I kind of shared about as well. And the chambers, we're looking for the $35,000 there. So we can do all three chambers for odor control. And then we actually had $18,000 budgeted last year in 2024 for ammonia controlled testing equipment, and we had to spend that on an autoclave machine. Basically that's like a sterilization chamber that you use to put all your, uh, beakers in and everything else. When you're running your tests for your sewer that you, uh, submit to the department of ecology. So we want to make sure that all that's sterile when you run your test, so you don't get a negative, um, reading. So we actually had to replace the machine. So we need to actually still buy the ammonia testing equipment. So we're asking for $20,000 to buy that this year, since we weren't able to buy it last year. And then on our list station, we have a, um, $116,000 that we have to pay back. The lift station at the school district was constructed. It had an original note of over a half a million dollars. We're paying it to the school district over five years. We have two more payments to them to have it paid off in full. So we'll be paying them this year. And then we'll have one final payment in 2026 and then we'll have, um, um, no more debt to the school for that lift station. Um, one of the things I wanted to share too is, uh, this should be moved to, it shouldn't be in a capital project fund. So, uh, next year this will be showing in a debt service versus capital project. And also the lab analytical equipment actually should never be in a capital project. It should be in a maintenance because it, it's just like, you know, maintaining your filter or whatever. So, and the media too, that's maintenance. That's regular maintenance. So those things won't be in your capital projects next year. It'll just be in your general maintenance for your sewer facility. Hey, last slide, I think. We'll see what you come up with. Okay. Stormwater. So, uh, stormwater management plan. So when the stormwater study was done in 2019, it was recommended and stated that part of the stormwater fees that are collected every month will go for a stormwater management plan to manage the stormwater system throughout the city. That plan has never been done. So, um, I have reached out to a couple of different consultants, engineering consultants. And, um, there is, we'll start that plan and I'm asking to, uh, $30,000 to start that plan. The current one that we had was done over 20 years ago before the, um, the fees were put in there. So we need to start that plan. And so to gather all the information and all the data points and everything and put it into a system. It's about $30,000 to start that. So that comes out of the stormwater fee, which is what you're paying for anyway, and what it was, what was calculated to be spent on. So I'm looking, uh, to spend the money there. And then also, um, part of the vehicle costs will come out of stormwater too, because we do use the vehicles to service our stormwater. And then also for the street sweeper repair, because as Jim was stating earlier, the former mayor, that, um, we actually go out and we, uh, sweep the streets and we pick up leaves, so on and so forth. So we need vehicles and the street sweeper to do that. So we'll be taking some of the funds out of there for the repairs on that and the purchase of the new vehicles. Okay. Did everybody turn their hearing aids up and did I talk fast enough?
Did you say something?
Yeah, I did. Yeah. So, so.
So you're asking for a lot of money.
No, not very much at all. I could have asked for a lot more.
I just, I just had a little bit of feedback. It was a great presentation. You are amazing for our, you know, just next time the font is really difficult to read. So if you can find something that's a little bit easier, especially with that much information slides, that would be wonderful.
I will do that. Thank you. I wanted to make it bold so everybody could see it.
I know. It was.
It was too bold?
It was, the, all the caps made it and the.
It was like, ah, okay.
Yeah, exactly. And I'm sure they struggled.
Could you guys, could you guys read it? I want to know if you guys could read it. Okay. But I think, I can, I think I can make it less fat.
Yeah, I think that was some of the spacing. Yeah, but.
Counsel, this will be presented to the budget committee and they'll be going through it and then doing their advisement and then handing it off. So it will be coming back into the budget cycle for you. There may be some changes or add-ons or takeaways, just so you know. But Tracy, I wanted to give you guys a heads up of what, what it was looking like. And a lot of the stuff that, that's being spent is money that we have to spend. It's sitting in funds that are meant for that. And there's a few million dollars in there. And some of the money is going to expire by 2026 as well.
Yeah. So you have your transportation impact fees, your, um, park impact fees, you have REIT one and REIT two funding. Um, you have a budget sitting there that you've collected and that need, that the REITS don't expire. But you have REIT one and REIT two funding and you have over a million dollars in each of those budgets. And that's what that money is collected for to do things like this. Yeah. I know. I came on the perfect timing.
Yeah.
And I don't even like to shop.
Yeah.
And then, and then the other thing too, is your, your park impact fees, they start expiring. And I think some of our fees start expiring in 2030. Um, but our transportation impact fees, which is where we could use for some of this, um, grant matching, some of those start to expire in 2026. So it's very important that we get out there and we spend the money, but it's sitting there so we don't lose it.
And being used wisely, right?
Sure.
Stuff that's actually needed for the city to keep the operations and, and what everybody enjoys. And I just wanted to, oh, go ahead, Maria.
Oh, I was just going to say, as Mayor mentioned, we, this is the first of our budget presentations. So we are in the midst of that. And so if there, if you have any concerns or you have questions or you want something cut, you need to speak up. Um, we will bring the budget to you in the next month, but this is going to be incorporated in. So we definitely need to hear questions that you have.
Yeah. And I was just going to say, I thought it was a great presentation and I could tell that, you know, there's a lot of thought that went into it. And it seems like you guys are, you and your team are, you know, going through and doing a lot of responsible spending. You know, repairing old equipment, not just, you know, automatically getting ready, good as stuff going for new and just trying to make, you know, stretch these dollars a little bit further than, you know, sometimes we. It's easier to just go off and try and buy new stuff, but this, um, helps the city in the long run and I appreciate that.
I will share one more thing too, that I've, I've, um, put into place, uh, that'll start in October. We now have a program. So anytime we get a new vehicle, um, I think it's important that as, as an employee, um, and having a vehicle that's brand new, I think it's important that they take ownership of that vehicle. And so anytime we have new equipment, I have a program that's starting that, uh, does a, a walkthrough. It's assigned to an individual. And then they do, they're supposed to walk around it every day before they use it. And if they have anything that's wrong with it, they're supposed to report it. And so it, it's critical that they go through and they clean those vehicles every week and we make sure that we put seat covers on them and that they're taken care of. Because again, I, I think the vehicles have been taken care of. I'm not saying they haven't. But I think it's, it's important to let the citizens know that, that they do take ownership of it. And we want to make sure that, that it's not just a vehicle that's brand new. Like, oh, I have this new vehicle. But it's like something I have to take care of because I'm probably not going to get another one for another 20 years. So, um, that is a program that we're putting into place. So.
All right. Thank you, Tracy. Any questions, counsel? All right. It's going to be a long night, so my mayor's, uh, report will be very brief. Um, I wanted to thank everybody that attended the ribbon cutting ceremony up at the, uh, Chevron there. Um, it was, it was a, it was a lot of fun and hopefully you guys enjoyed it. There were several businesses there that got, that got to celebrate, uh, that didn't have ribbon cuttings before. Um, and I learned of a few companies that are actually located in our city that I'd never known of. So please, if you've got time, stop by and visit your local businesses. They would appreciate it. That is all I'm going to state tonight. Uh, next up is our attorney's report. That is all I'm going to state tonight. Uh next up is our attorney's report. Uh Janine, are you with us?
I am with you. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Very loud and clear.
Excellent. Well, um I am coming to you from the rainy city of Tacoma right now and I had a municipal attorney's conference, so I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. Um and I don't have anything particular to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the attorney? All right. Thank you, Janine. We'll hear more from you later later tonight, right? Counsel comments. Counsel member Fox.
Good evening. Like um Mayor said, we do have a long night, so I'm gonna keep it short as well. I just want to thank everybody for coming. Tonight, our Hawks played uh a football game that I tragically had to miss. My son is number four, tight end, Jack Fox. Amazing player. Um my sister did text me that he got the winning touchdown and they did win. Sorry, I had to look at my phone because my my mother's heart is for my boy. So we won um and but my job is to be here. So that's why I'm here, because I take this position seriously and I will miss my son's game. And I will not miss anything for my son's game. So um undefeated. So go Hawks and if anybody um has some free time. Uh the boosters need help in the concessions. I did it last Friday. Um great fun. Uh great way to uh meet new people in town and just great way to uh connect with the city. So look into that. The boosters on the Facebook page, you can sign up for the concessions. That's a great help right now. Um open house tomorrow for middle school. So if you have any middle schoolers, there is an open house from five to seven. Uh check your last name because uh five to six is the first round and then six to seven. Um and yeah, other than that, thanks for all the hard work. Appreciate it. City's doing great work, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel member Casper.
Well, I think the elementary school is having an open house as well, so yeah.
Oh, it's a, oh, I didn't know. I don't have elementary students anymore. I have two middle schoolers, so I was just speaking.
Check your last name though, because you got a different hour based on that.
Except for the switch outs at the exact same time. So I'm like, how are they expect to get at, you know, ends at six and the new family start at six? That parking lot is going to be in Mayhem.
Now they'll figure it out. Um, no, I have nothing to add. Well, I did, but I changed my mind.
Thank you. Counsel member Boyle. Uh good evening, everyone. Uh thanks for showing up. That's it.
Moving on, we got a, we got a long list here.
Hoping we get done before eleven.
Burn up, hurry.
Okay, I'll try to keep it short compared to other nights. Um thank you for everyone that showed up tonight. We really appreciate that. The ribbon cutting was great and I got to cut the ribbon. So um I do encourage you to to shop at our shops up there. They're all located above the Chevron station. Very important. Um yesterday I attended the Clark County Council meeting because I do think it's important to to know kind of what's going on in the county. So I did get to hear Kristen Wade that gave a presentation here earlier tonight. Um and I got to talk to her a little bit after the county council meeting. So um I was happy to see that we were doing a a declaration for that for the month of October. Um because I think that is important for uh people with disabilities to be able to have a fair chance to get a job. So um that's pretty much what I'm gonna say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel member serving.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things and welcome everyone. Thanks for coming. Um first of all, the blood drive that's scheduled on Thursday, October third. And that will be from twelve to six P M. You can sign up at redcrossblood.org. And enter your zip code and get your appointment made. It's a perfect thing for October, fits into Halloween and all that. And then the second one is um our drug takeback event on Saturday, October twenty sixth, ten A M to two P M. And there are various locations, are in the center one. Here in town, but it doesn't take sharps, but there are a couple of them that do. So grab the flyer in the back or look at the website and you can find out more. Um you know, there are a lot of different needs, uh folks with disabilities um to deposit those safely. And um we thank the police department for helping us host that. Thank you very much. And that's all.
Thank you. We do have uh three staff reports tonight. First up is the Fourth Street and Highland Road Traffic Signal Project. Mr. Tony Cooper will be presenting. Tony?
Are you okay?
No.
No, I'm okay. Uh so I'm I'm not gonna make this too too long because we've got a long night. And so this is uh this is a request for award of the Fourth Street. And Highland Road Traffic Signal Project and also approval of professional services agreement for um inspection of the electrical part of it. So I just want to go over, Tracy already went over some of this, but um back in June of two thousand twenty two, uh the city applied for a Safe Route School Grant. For uh the signal with assisted by PBS Engineering. And um in uh November, I think of that year, we were contacted by uh project manager for Safe Route to School. Um and uh she wanted to meet out there and discuss the project. So I met out with her out there and and um. She, her, her goal is to try to make it safer for students, pedestrians, but mainly students. Along that corridor. So she wanted us to enhance some of the, some of the things around there. So what we did was we proposed um. Um a rectangular reflecting flashing beacons at the crossing of the paper lot. So we're gonna place um some electronics signs, push button signs that'll flash. Um for pedestrians to cross across there. Um also a speed feedback sign. Uh for uh people driving westbound towards the signal can alert them of their speeds and also. Um a twenty mile an hour flashing uh school zone sign on three thirty ninth approaching the high school. There's nothing there, but we're just just a regular uh. School zone sign. So we're gonna add that to it. So that was all part of that, what um she was requesting that we 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 try to enhance. So. Uh we adjusted our cost estimate, submitted it to her with those and we got um. A letter in, I think it was two thousand twenty three, that we got awarded nine hundred and sixty six thousand dollars, a little over nine hundred and sixty six thousand dollars for. Construction, but a part of it, most of it is eight hundred and sixty four thousand just for the construction, a hundred and two thousand for construction engineering. So uh and that's no match at all on that. So it's it's just all grant. Uh so um city had to go through washed out local programs for approval because that's part of the require requirement of state funding. It took several months to get that. Uh we got authorization to advertise it. We advertised it in the Colombian and the D J C. On uh August seventh and bids were open on the September fourth and there were six bids. The bids range from six hundred and ninety nine thousand, six hundred and ninety nine dollars up to nine hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. Uh so and it was by the the bid, the low bid was submitted by uh advanced excavating specialists and and we worked with them before, so they are they are contractor we know. And uh PBS submitted a um proposal for uh engineering services to just review this electrical part of the signal and. Make sure that everything's submitted by the contractor and inspected by the contractor for the use of the electrical part of the signal. Um we've been coordinating with Clark County to maintain the signal. And uh they actually reviewed the plan to make sure that they meet their standards. So um we're actually coordinating with them right now for a local agreement. To um have them maintain the signal in the future. So the total cost from P P B S for the um just the uh inspection for the electrical part of it is three hundred thirty five thousand, three hundred and seventy nine. Dollars. And um again, that low bid for from A E S for construction is six hundred and ninety nine thousand, six hundred and ninety nine, kind of an odd number, but that's what it came out to be. So the total cost is seven hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, which is well under the the grant budget. Uh so the city is requesting that counsel um award this construction project and professional service agreement authorization. Uh any questions?
Questions, comment, counsel?
The only thing that I was curious about is the uh. Uh the the speed radar signs. I know the others ones that we have, we've had issues with battery life.
This will be.
Have they made them better?
Yeah, this will be hard wired.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll it'll connect to, we've already coordinated with uh CPU on on the connection of those to be, you know, electronically connected so they're not working with solar. So, yeah.
Our first traffic signal. It's actually really needed out there. I don't know if you guys have ever left the schools at three o'clock or that, any of the roads out there. It's terrible. Absolutely horrendous to get on them. Yeah. Um if you don't have any other questions, can I get a a motion? Or can Tony get a motion?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with advanced excavating specialists in the amount of six hundred and ninety nine thousand, six hundred and ninety nine. Dollars and to sign the P S A with PBS Engineering in the amount of thirty five thousand, three hundred and seventy nine dollars.
Second.
Second.
It's moved, it's been moved second and third. Um all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Tony. You you've been working very hard on that. I don't know if you guys know it, but he has really put a lot of blood, sweat and tears into this one. We had a lot of timelines that he had to make. Uh and we were pushing deadlines with uh vacation of uh properties and such and Tony persevered and and it's now before us. So thank you again, Tony.
Great. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is the police staff report. Commander Chief.
Mister Mayor, council members, staff, citizens, thank you for letting me talk this evening, speak to you. Uh we got an overview here. Well, we did, we did a comparison between uh it's practically nine months of twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, just to kind of keep us updated here. Uh a lot of your citizen calls have went down with the exceptions of a few calls, but our our uh officer initiated activity has went up. So some of the calls of uh increased are the for the citizens of the traffic stops, thirty six percent increase. Traffic accidents are slightly up at twenty eight, permit checks, uh vehicles mostly abandoned. And those are mostly officer initiated. We go out there and check the abandoned vehicles, uh thefts and contacts. Rest of call types are kind of like suspicious autos, suspicious people, things of that nature. And not every call equates to a crime. And so when you hear call types, it doesn't mean that it was a crime committed. So our next slide here. Our calls for service here. So we we still have on the left hand side, you have twenty twenty three, on the right hand side, you have twenty twenty four. Uh the above graph, graph indicates uh we'll respond to from twenty three to twenty four. Community initiated calls from nine one one, officer initiated calls, the top and the bottoms. If you look at the the rates right there. Uh April and May of twenty twenty four, the calls jumped from one eighty six to two fifty four. So that was pretty good, a thirty six point five percent increase. And other portion of the calls of May of twenty twenty four to a hundred and thirteen. So officer initiated. Uh things are going very well and we we see an increase here where they were saying for the summer months because we're thinking due to school being out. The weather, more people out and about, doing more things. So uh the lower graph, go to the next slide. It shows a number of reports written here for the comparison between the two years. Uh May increased. Twenty three from uh twenty twenty three to thirty three and twenty four, forty three percent increase. And similar reports in twenty twenty four, July of twenty twenty four grew by fifty five percent comparison of the same month in twenty three. So the transit highlights are fluctuating, but considered growth and reporting, report writing across many of the uh months there. Uh right here, this one is community initiated calls for August of twenty twenty four. There's a comparison to July to August. So. These are the ones that people call in for us, fifteen most common type of calls for community initiative with traffic, uh contact alarms. Uh suspicious activity and disturbances, follow-ups, theft, traffic accidents, harassment, noise complaints. Uh looks like auto prowls kind of prowls kind of fell off the mark here in August. Uh civil disputes, medical and missing persons. And there were not four. Sometimes there are several reports on one person. That's how they come back to us in our reports. Uh the next slide here, we can probably push past that. That's just talking about dispositions of calls there, which. It's kind of like how we sit there, we code off a call like Y one, Y two, Willie one, Willie two. So go to the next slide. I think this was pretty interesting here. This is the first time we've done this one right here. This will take you here to look at the day uh. The time and day of the calls taking place using data from last year and this year of a twenty four hour timeline, the busiest times. Uh was doc documented at zero seven A M to and twenty two hundred, which is ten P M. I'm sorry, going military at regular time, seven A M to ten P M. Uh the busiest times of the week being Wednesdays and Saturdays, the usual spike on Friday is about two P M. Uh which could coincide with the school dismissal. So if you look across the top, you've got the. Hours of the day and down the side, the days of the week. This is two years combined on this this graph right here. And that's where we come through. If you look at fourteen on a Friday, there's like a fifty four right there. I know it's really hard to see. I apologize, council member Fox. I don't want to.
No, I can see this. I mean, kind of, I need to, I think I need to see prescriptions.
Thank you.
I can put it on my computer.
Okay, and next slide here. This was pretty interesting right here. This is a great staffer to have. Um so August, the summary for twenty twenty four. If you look at the first number, the seven minutes and sixteen seconds, that's the average time that a call goes to dispatch. It comes back to us for us to get to where the call is going. It's a total time of seven minutes and sixteen seconds, which is not bad. And we've already had the events for uh August of twenty twenty four, community initiated and officer initiated was two thirty four. Citations for the month were fifteen. But we had fifty four stops with different types of warnings given, education, engineering. So we're educating the folks as we go along. Uh the very bottom right here of January twenty twenty three to August of twenty four, there have been approximately three thousand nine hundred and thirty five events. Uh for service and the average time on our calls is thirty four minutes and fifty five seconds, so. And the last slide, we spoke earlier about the uh the takeback here, August twenty six, twenty twenty four from ten A M to four, or it's actually two P M. I don't know where that four came from, typo. Uh so the precinct now has a security gate on the back of it and that's where we did it last year. The cars can come through and do a kind of a. Roundabout. This year, if you come down Aspen and you turn onto Fifth, we're gonna have it right out front where the driveway is out there. And so you just have to pull up, we'll come out to you. You can put whatever you're going to surrender, you give skip to us and we'll just take it back inside. So we're not going to utilize the gate there. On the back portion, but there'll be more information coming out about that as we as we move forward. So. Uh with that being said, thank you for your time and thank you for all your considerations. And thank you for a beautiful precinct. It's been rebranded. If you haven't seen it, drive by and look at it. It's very professional and it it looks, it looks great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I gotta tell you, it's nice to see fifty four uh traffic stops going on there uh for warnings. It's nice that uh we're hopefully see some of these cars to slow, slow down a little bit more as more police officers arrive in the city.
Yeah, if I can comment on that, uh Debbie Fraser and Boyle both told me that they sit out and do the speed measuring device, the radar in the morning in the school zones. Said a lot of people slowed down a lot. And so they they're sitting there watching, waiting to catch somebody to go through and they lurked your your radar off. It's like a high pitched beep. And they go, no, people are just kind of cruising through there now. So. So I guess we got to find a different area now. But we have placed our uh speed trailer out in different locations. Right now it's on a, it's up Tac Highway up here. So. We're giving additional, you know, speed warnings and stuff.
I know if you set one of the officers right outside of City Hall here, you'll get a certain BMW that leaves at about five o'clock.
I I I don't, I don't think our cars are fast enough to catch that one.
Thank you, commander. Any questions for the commander? Comments? All right. Thank you. Great report. Uh next up, Public Works and Community Development Staff Report. Tracy Coleman will be presenting. Tracy?
Yes, get to hear more of my voice. Okay, here.
I wasn't sure if Angie was doing a review or.
No, we we were just, um Maria and I were just talking about that. You know, there was kidnappings and stuff and we figured they'd give us back. They wouldn't want us. If there was a kidnapping, they'd be like giving us.
We wouldn't need the seven minutes.
We wouldn't need it. We're, they'd be like, take them. We wouldn't get kidnapped is what we're saying. All right. That's what, that's what the little side comments are around here. Okay, so um in regards to public works uh reporting, so. Um we are working right now with a vendor for that surplus items that we're gonna put out for sale. Uh we expect them to go on website live in October. We expect them to go on website live in October. I can't give you the exact date yet. We have the gentleman coming out this next week to put the lots together and then we'll we'll let you know. We'll probably have a report at the next council meeting next week as far as when that's going to be live. I know there are some people in the audience that were asking about that. The flagpoles, if you guys noticed, the flagpoles are up at the roundabout. I don't think we announced that because I wasn't here last time. Or did you announce that? Okay, I'm sorry. Well, the flagpoles are up at the roundabout and they look awesome. And I want to I do want to thank the American Legion for being out there for that ceremony and giving a gun salute for that. And then we do have new banners on the bridge, as you can see that. And basically, there'll be lights coming soon. So I'm not done with that that game plan as far as the way it looks. So you'll see some new lights. And the plan is if I can get the lighting done, meaning some wiring on the lights that I'm I'm hoping to see what it costs to have that speed sign wired coming into town hard hardwired. So we aren't replacing it with solar batteries all the time. So we'll be looking at doing that as well. The crosswalk installations in the city were completed prior to the first day of school. So all the crosswalks were done. And then the I already talked about the community center revitalization project. Those bids are due back in November fifth. Sea Trends, a park and ride, that the grading and shaping of the lot is completed and the concrete work is out to bid. We'll wait and see what those come back in and then whether or not we can do it less expensive or if we can have somebody else do it, we'll decide what we're going to do at that point. We're right now working on our fall irrigation. Maintenance has been done begun blowing out the lines and the BMX track has been rebuilt at Holly Park. Our staff did a really good job of doing that. And then we closed the splash splash pad down on September sixteenth. It was the last day it was in operation because we had some heat going on after school started. And then we'll be working, as we stated, on the fall maintenance for the culverts and ditches around town. In regards to maintenance, we completed in our wastewater operations, we completed the quarterly lift station cleanings, which means that when you flush your toilets, it keeps going on down to the plant. So that's good. And then we completed our annual annual maintenance of all our generators as well. So if we have power outages, we can keep those operational. And we're actually going to work on a grease trap inspection program. That's something that I'm bringing up here. So we want to educate the public on grease trap, grease traps and not pouring grease down your drains and and ways that you can get around that. And then also to go around the businesses here in town and make sure that they're not putting grease down down the drains as well. So we don't have any plugups there. And in regards to the building department, we had Highland Terrace in phase one and two have fifteen homes under construction and Case Place has five homes under construction. And Stevens Hillside has nine homes. Lockwood Meadows has eight. Ayes, is that how you say that, Tony? Ayes? Aces, thank you. View has four homes under construction and the Minute Mart has its final certificate of occupancy, which has been a long time coming. So in regards to community activity, we have fifty eight. I did fix the chart. So since the last meeting, so we have fifty eight residential new builds to date. And we have twenty nine land use submittals. We have a total of one hundred and seventy three applications in hand. And then I just wanted to kind of touch in regards to our code enforcement. So we went ahead and hired a contractor to come in and do some code enforcement for us. Just some temporary. We did it. We worked with the union and we did a thirty eighty con contract. And since that contractor has come on board, they have actually closed thirty one cases since September ninth, which is great. We have a total number of cases in our system of one hundred and thirty one. And the total number of cases that are closed now are one hundred and twenty five. And we only have six outstanding code enforcement cases. And one of the oldest ones is basically junk and garbage in somebody's yard. And so it's kind of hard to work with people when they have that. So we just continue to a little bit at a time, continue to work with individuals to be able to close this out. So but anyway, I won't say anymore about that, except for we're working very hard on making sure that we get all of our cases closed. And I think to only have six outstanding cases since we had somebody come on board on the ninth is outstanding itself. That's all I got.
She's doing a great job, actually.
Yeah, she is. She's amazing.
Wonderful job. She's a great person. Thank you very much for that report. And I do expect to see all of you guys on bicycles at the BMX track, right? Al? Any questions for Tracy?
I just have a question about the bridge or the veteran banners that people were buying. I I had it. I guess it was my understanding that those were going to be up all the time. Like, what's the plan with those?
Yeah, actually, that's a great question. And that's something that I changed. I think that it's important that things don't become stagnant. And so to have a veteran banner up there for three hundred and sixty five. No, well, that I'm just want to make sure that the audience knows. Yeah, to have it up three hundred and sixty five days out of the year, people just drive by it and doesn't make it isn't a wow factor. So I created a banner schedule. So we'll have different themes throughout the year. So definitely during Memorial Day, Veterans Day, the Fourth of July, so on and so forth, we'll definitely have our veteran banners up, our flags, our flower pots for Mother's Day, Gulf of Mother's Day, our flower baskets. And then we kind of just kind of all encompass that. And then when we have our our day celebration, we'll have a different banner that goes up. When we have Valentine's Day, we'll have an I love La Center sign that goes up there. We'll have different lighting that goes up during that time to accent the city as you're coming into town. And so for the fall, we have the fall banners. Normally, we'd have orange lights up there at that time, just to kind of give it an accent when you're coming in. We'll return to have the yellow ribbons on there during the veterans memorial, Fourth of July on the bridge as well, which which are a great add to for that overall theme. So we do have a schedule that I just gave to Maria yesterday, and she'll put that on the website for people who want to buy those that say when the banners will be up. It's basically from Flag Day all the way through the Fourth of July, then it goes up for Veterans Day and and so on. So yeah, there's a good timeframe that they're up there, and that'll be on the website.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And we still need one more banner for to launch our. We have another group of people that were waiting, but we need five banners to make an order. And so we have four for four new faces up there. And so if you know of anybody that is a veteran that's lived in La Center or lives in La Center, we'd love to have them up.
And what was the cost of that again?
Two thirty five, I think.
Near that, two hundred and thirty five dollars.
Is there anybody that you know of that's wanting a banner that doesn't have the funds?
No, we have some people that have said that they would donate if there's a if they don't have the funds. And so we'll take those people as well.
Okay.
And something else to note, too, is that we won't have the same the same banners up over the bridge every time. So we'll have, you know, new faces, seven new faces on the bridge. And then when we get new banners in the rotate, the seven faces to a different part of town. And then the next time when we have another banner, we'll just have new people rotating on that bridge. So you get that first look, and then you'll just have people throughout town, and we'll just keep rotating them. So they're in different areas. Like I said, that wow factor, it's like, oh, I haven't seen that person before, you know, depending on how people turn off.
Makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks again, Tracy. Appreciate it. All right, we do have some ordinances tonight and a resolution. Tonight's resolution is something that's a long time coming. We've worked hard on. So hopefully you can appreciate what's about to be presented. Resolution four eighty three CCSO law enforcement agreement between the city of La Center and Clark County. Janine Parker will be presenting. Janine, you still with us?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay, so the resolution before you this evening is to authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement that is attached and then to approve that agreement and then take all other actions consistent with that agreement to get it implemented. And so I don't know, Mayor, is there a do you want very much detail in going through this? Or did counsel have a chance to read it and just wants to ask any particular questions about it?
Counsel, that's up to you. This is your meeting. Did you guys have a chance to read over the CCSO contract? Do you happen to have any questions? Actually, you know what, Jeanne, if you want to just give a brief overview, so the public and the people in the audience can hear it.
Oh, absolutely. So this will be an agreement that authorizes the county to provide services in the city, and that includes the chief of police. And then there is a an assigned personnel based on an agreed budget that's attached. And I would have to defer to you, Mayor, on on what the intended level of service would be for for the the number of bodies that are intended in the in the department. But the sort of the the makeup and the the administration of that department is set forth in the agreement. In particular, it allow it allows it requires some reporting back to the mayor and to the city council. It requires coordination on media releases and public, public information when there isn't any kind of an incident. It also authorizes the county police to to share in the joint use of the police department. It provides a process to change or if there are any issues related to the staffing, it provides a process to to address that. And a review, you know, and performance reviews to make sure that the city is getting the level of service that they're looking for. And then in return, we are authorizing the county to perform our enforcement services or perform the enforcement duties within the city. And I believe the initial agreement we have just done for five years with the but I believe that there's some rights to extend in that. So that can and then it also has a termination provision that requires like a year plan in in the event of termination. So there's there's some process for any transition and then and an ability to extend. But a rather short first term to kind of make sure that we're working out any issues. And then the rest is just a lot of legalese and indemnification and dispute resolution and those kinds of things. But and if I've glossed over something that you would like more information on, please let me know. And if not, I'm happy to try to answer any particular questions.
This agreement also covers a lot of the extras that you would pay for as a city when the sheriff gets involved, like detective services, SWAT and such like that. So that'll all be included in the agreement. We also chose a front level payout on the schedule. So for each year, we will be paying out a certain amount. And I think out of the five years, only two years actually reaches the million dollar mark, a little over a million. The others stay underneath the million. We chose this route just because it kept the fees a little bit lower with a couple of higher payouts during those time periods. We tried to think about everything. There was a lot of people that were involved with this. It also allows us to use the police station still for vehicles and such to be locked up if we're having problems in the city or we need a place for it to sit that's safe, including also in the police station as well. Though access to it will be limited to a certain amount of employees and people that have done C dis clearance. Anything else you think you can add to that, Phil or Sample, Commander? Anything off the top of your head?
Nothing goes by it right now.
I had a couple of questions on under the personnel and equipment under four point five, where it talks about that the sheriff, chief enforcement deputy, the chief shall also have the authority to sign various regional agreements involving this city. So is that just the chief alone? Or does that include the chief and the mayor and or council?
That would be a legal question, Janine. Did you hear the count question there?
Yes, I did. And and what this is actually a section that we amended slightly. There are there occasions when the chief of police is part of regional efforts or tasks, task forces or other groups might have need to to enter into agreements with that for La Center to participate in some of those things. The original agreement just had that the chief would would enter into those. And I believe we added some clarification to this sentence that or to this provision that that would require the specific approval of the mayor or the city council, as may be required by city regulations and in consult consultation with with the chief. So the chief would have to come to the city to get appropriate authority to to sign on behalf of the city in any way that it would bind it so that you will have an opportunity to review that. Typically, the mayor assigns contracts or you delegated that authority to different department heads. In this case, you're just you're you're also delegating that to the commander, but it would be through it would it would be after an approval process that your regulations already provide for. Does that make sense?
Okay, and the that answered my question. Thank you. And the other one is on the page performance review under five point performance review schedule. The city shall have an opportunity to comment on its satisfaction with the service delivered and request adjustments or modifications. So what is that meant by the city? Is that the city is the mayor and the city council? Or again, the city, the mayor and the chief? The city, who who does that mean?
What I that's a very good question. I I guess I didn't didn't realize that that needed to be clarified. So in generally, the the commander will be a county employee and subject to the county's employment regulations and and performance reviews. However, because he's doing work specifically in within the city, then the city has an ability to to do that performance review. And and because it is somewhat open ended here, I think it would be up to the city to devise what what a performance evaluation or performance review process it would think necessary. So if that would be, you know, discussions with counsel or a performance checklist to to be given to counsel and then shared. I mean, I don't know what that looks like, but I think we have a lot of flexibility in in shaping it the way that would work for the council and would be able to evolve over time so that you have that feedback. And then I think there's some 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 good collaboration language in the agreement generally. So if you don't think that's happening or there are issues that are coming up, you can bring those to the mayor or or walk through the process within the agreement and and bring those to the attention of the county and get them addressed. So I think that was that was the intent as I understood it, but we didn't clarify what that city review would look like.
Okay, I'm I was thinking of when I worked with the sheriff's office and you have a review once a year and they go over what you've done well and maybe something that to improve on. And so I didn't know if that would be more the chief that would have that up, but also in conjunction with the mayor and the city council.
Well, the way I read that part of the contract was that was the city's responsibility or ability to provide feedback and performance of the entire contract. It's not it's not it's not the individual deputy. Chief Sample will will handle the
Okay.
the individual performance reviews. But the city, which is the mayor, will be able to discuss the overall performance of of the contract because there's also a provision in there where if there's a an issue with a specific personnel that the city can have input in whether or not that person is removed from that position or and there's somebody else selected. And then to go back to the to the first question you had, it spoke of the chief enforcement deputy, who is the appointed chief of the enforcement branch. So the the agreements that that he is able to sign are not necessarily paid contractual issues, but there's a lot of MOUs that are in place for the regional major crimes unit, the regional independent investigative team, the regional SWAT team are all covered under MOUs, which are all signed by the individual chiefs of police. So that is something that that because we're contracting with the sheriff's office, that they will sign that on behalf of the entire sheriff's office jurisdiction, which covers us.
Okay, that that makes sense to me. Yes.
Good job, Casey. You're welcome.
What were we doing without you?
This is also for four officers, chief of police and a actual clerk that'll be in house. And these positions will be filled over time. It's not something that's going to happen tomorrow. This is signed today. This is stuff that you'll see implemented over the next course of four or five months, if I remember correctly.
Okay, so the civilian part comes under the city's responsibility. So that's.
What's that? I'm sorry. Which one?
Yeah.
No, the civilian support staff. No, the civilian support staff. I actually got clarification on that myself. No, this is all going to be under the sheriff.
Oh, okay.
The fees that you see up there are including the civilian support staff.
Okay. Good.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah. Cause then all the training and certifications that go with that.
Right. In fact, the support staff, I think there's a breakdown on one of your pages in there that give you the cost and everything of that person. And then also their raises over time and such.
Yes, correct. Cause when they settle their contract, they do get raises every, whatever it is, two and a half, three percent, four percent each year. That we, that would be part of that.
Yeah. Is it, is it Chief Duncan? Is that what he goes by? Is it chief or?
Chief Hoss.
Chief Hoss. Yeah. Duncan Hoss. He, he set all that up. So yeah, they'll fall under him.
Okay.
I do want to say one other thing is when we bring the budget forward, there will be additional money. So for 2025, you're, it's going to be more than $877,000 because there is a cost to run the building and some additional cost in there. So when you, when we bring the budget and it's, you know, whatever, you know, however many thousands of dollars more, that's why. Because it is not just eight seventy-seven to run the PD. There is additional costs.
Yeah. The police station that Riley had given us a estimate on was about $26,000 a year. That will be on top of that.
And back to the, uh, performance issue, just for, just very quickly, I apologize, apologize if I was misspeaking. I guess I was thinking that more in sort of performance of, of the, the commander or whoever the, the lead person was in making sure that you're, you're meeting the requirements of the city. And to that end, I wanted to also point to you to section two point one of the agreement. And that actually provides that the, the sheriff will consult with the mayor and the city to kind of define what the enforcement issues of the city are and what our priorities are, and then help focus on those. So if traffic in a certain area is an issue, or if there is some other kind of code in for, you know, enforcement thing happening, you have the ability to kind of communicate those priorities within the contract and, and have them addressed. So just wanted to point that out because that, that's an important consideration.
And I also want the council to be aware of that, you know, just the, the four officers, a chief and a support staff, isn't the only officers you're going to see in this area, right? They're putting fiber connections in and such so they can do body camera uploads and, and for officers that are out here, you're going to have briefings that they're talking about even having at our police station. So there's going to be a lot of police activity going in and out of La Center. The police will be well-known and the, the city will be known for obeying law, right? And that's what we want to make that statement with. We don't want to see the criminals here. We don't want to see the speeders here. We wanted to go back to that quaint town that we fell in love with. And I, I believe that this contract puts us in that right direction. As you guys know, we've been working on this for quite a while.
I liked all the detail that was in this, although not since I'm not an attorney, not necessarily understanding every detail, but I appreciated all the work that went into it.
It's been a lot. It's been a long journey to get to this point. Any further questions or comments or conversation amongst each other? Janine, by this resolution, this resolution here, does that authorize the signature of the contract as well as the resolution or just the resolution? And do they need to make a motion for that as well?
No. So by approving the resolution, section one of the resolution actually approves the agreement that's attached. And then section two authorizes the mayor to execute that agreement and then also take whatever other incidental actions are necessary to implement the agreement.
So any questions? Questions, comments, concerns? If not, then I will entertain a motion. Janine, you don't have a cheat sheet there for?
Yeah.
I apologize. I'm still learning the protocols there. I didn't get my little staff report done for this one. So the motion would be to, to approve the resolution, approving the inter-local agreement between Clark County and the City of La Center for Law Enforcement Services as presented.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the inter-local agreement between Clark County and the City of La Center for Law Enforcement Services.
Second.
Solution. Four eighty-three.
Uh, you want to try that again?
I make a motion to agree with the interlocal, inter-local agreement between Clark County and the City of La Center for Law Enforcement Services, resolution four eighty-three. Second.
It's been moved in second. This is a, a heavy resolution. I, I know it's not necessarily, but I would like a roll call vote with it, please.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Leha?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
All right. Resolution passes. I got goosebumps. We've got police again. Yeah. Thank you, counsel. We still got more on the meeting to go, just so you know. We have an ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, La Center Road Vacation. Angie Merrill will be presenting. Angie?
Good evening. And the requested ordinance submitted this evening is in regards to the resolution that was passed on August twenty-eighth and the presentation that was given at that time. The city clerk posted the notice of tonight's hearing at city hall, the community center, the post office, and in the right of way to be, to be vacated. We received one comment from Clark Public Utilities regarding the request for a ten-foot utility easement along Northwest La Center Road. And staff replied to the comment confirming that the utility easement will be retained over the vacated area. The proposed ordinance has been approved by the city attorney. That's all I have.
Add that signature on there. Okay. Before I actually go on to that, I think, is there any questions or comments to what Angie presented there before we go into public comments? So that way it may trigger some of the public comments or questions. Counsel? No.
No.
All right. So at eight forty-six, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Are there any public comments from the audience? If there is, please step up, stick to the topic at hand. Any from those calling in, please press star six down, mute yourself, state your name and stay to the ordinance.
Yes, Kimberly Goheen Alvin. I'll take my three minutes and ask a question. Could somebody describe where this is? I think I saw the map, but I'm thinking it's on Pacific, heading north out of town. Would that be correct?
Heading west and it's out the center road, right? This is, yeah, the south side of La Center Road, Kimberly. Going up towards the minute management, the Shell Station area.
Oh, okay. And the purpose for this? And then that's all I have to say, actually. I'll listen to, you know, what the purpose is and why this wants to be done and any impact on people walking and, or riding bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. This is something that has been discussed for two meetings now and has been posted. It's a vacation of property so that, that they can do their building up there. Tracy, if you want to elaborate just a little bit.
Yeah, there, there is no impact to any type of pedestrian access. There is no impact to traffic access. The only thing is, is it allows them to have a overhang at that their, their building would overhang in an area that they would have seating in, but it doesn't have anything to do with the pedestrian access, bicycle access, road access at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers calling in, please press star six down, mute yourself, state your name and stick to the ordinance at hand, please. Clerk, do we have any other callers?
No other callers at this time.
Uh, is there any written comments?
No written comments at this time either.
All right. Time is eight forty-nine. I'd like to close the public hearing. Any comments or questions or concerns from counsel?
Nope.
No.
No? If not, can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance twenty-four, four, seven, eight for the vacation of approximately four thousand two hundred and sixty-eight square feet of Northwest La Center Road.
Second.
It's been moved in second. This is an ordinance.
Just for the record, it's twenty twenty-four dash sixteen. I'm not sure how that number got it. I think that was a resolution number maybe last time, but it's just that, that's the ordinance number.
Uh, yeah. Can I entertain that motion one more time with the correct number?
Okay. Sorry. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, La Center Road Vacation for approximately four thousand two hundred and sixty-eight square feet of Northwest La Center Road.
Second.
It's been moved in second then. Can I get a roll call vote on this?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Leha?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance passes. Thank you, counsel. Appreciate it. Great work, Tracy, Angie, your, your team did a lot of work on that. So thank you very much. All right. Moving right along, we have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten, Transportation Benefit District. City Attorney Janine Parker will be presenting and I'm sure Tracy will throw some comments in as well, right? Janine?
Absolutely. So first of all, I'd like to apologize. I think I just realized I did not properly change the footer on this staff report. So my apologies on that for that incorrect information. But this is an item before you tonight that we're hoping to have a public hearing on and then consideration of the council of the ordinance. And this ordinance would form what is called a transportation benefit district in the city of La Center. The matter came before the council on August twenty-eighth for a workshop to talk about what the district does and why it's important in the city of La Center. And at the meeting on September eleventh, then, there was not only a presentation on pavement repair options and, and what, and how that money would be used, but also a resolution setting forth the council's intent to form the district and have the public hearing that we're having tonight. So what is a transportation benefit district? It is an independent public entity or taxing authority that the city can form to levy additional revenue from different sources, but the funding must be used solely and specifically for transportation projects within the city, or actually within the plans associated with the city. And then in those cases where the district that's formed is the same as the district, as the city limits, then the council is the governing body and can actually assume all the rights and powers of that transportation benefit district. It can use the funds for local, state and regional transportation plans. And not only can it fund capital improvements, but it can also fund maintenance as well and operation costs. And those are some things that, as you heard in the workshop on the eleventh, what are sometimes hard to, to get grants for. So the statute sets for some very specific things that you can do once you've formed a district. One is to do a sales and use tax. And when you do that sales and use tax, the council has the authority to separately impose a point one percent sales tax within, for sales within the city for up to 10 years. And then if any increase in that would have to go to the voters. And the statute allows an increase up to a point three percent, but anything over that point one would then have to be a ballot measure before the voters to, to, to take advantage of that increase. The other thing that the statute authorizes is a vehicle license fee. It initially must be twenty dollars is the maximum. And then after a certain period of time, that can be escalated in accordance with the statute. But anything more than that, again, has to go to the voters. So there are two tools that are, that are councilmatic that the council can impose. And then anything more than that will be, will be voter imposed. And there are a few other options. There's, you can issue bonds, you can do LIDs, there's some vehicle tolls. These are all seldom used, other tools. The, the two that I mentioned are the two most common tools that are used with TBDs. Excuse me. So the ordinance that we've drafted and are presenting this evening goes ahead and establishes that district and makes that district the city limits, co-terminus is the word, but it's going to, it's going to be consistent with the La Center city limits. And the city council will be the body that administers that district and decides what, what tools that district has. The, the ordinance also then formally assumes those rights. The statute kind of contemplated that you would form the district and then later the legislature came back and gave districts the ability to be assumed into the, into, into a council. We're kind of doing that all in one step. So the ordinance establishes the district and then assumes all the powers of the district into the, into the city council, which you can do. And then it authorizes the two, the two tools that I talked about, the point one percent and a vehicle, a vehicle tab fee. But those actions are not in the ordinance. It would require council to take a separate action, adopting a separate ordinance to do that. So this just sets up the structure of the district. And then at that, at some future time, you would evaluate what fiscal tools made the most sense and, and adopt separate action that would do that. And then it authorizes and requires that the funding be used for the purposes that TBDs are allowed to fund, which is the preservation, construction, reconstruction, maintenance and operation of city transportation improvements that are within our plans. And then there's a few other minor, like administrative, annual reporting and policy adoption provisions within the ordinance that just make it consistent with the statute. So I'm going to let other people talk about the budget impact. I think some of the documentation I saw from the workshop are that in the event the point one percent were, was imposed by council, it would, it would generate an estimated sixty-five thousand per year in TBD tax. But I'm, I'm just regurgitating what somebody else told me. So somebody else should probably weigh in on that. So first of all, I'm happy to answer any questions. And then I, I would ask that the, the council hold a public hearing and then consider the proposed ordinance. That's all I have.
Also keep in mind on this, Transportation Benefit District, it also helps us out with grants and such like that. It's some of the questions that are asked, if you've formed any of this, what it's doing is also stating that the city is doing everything it can to help pay for the roads and maintenance of such, right? So it's a huge benefit to the city just to even have the Transportation Benefit District. I, I am one of the last people that likes any new taxes. I really, just against them. I think we pay our fair share. But we're also, when you sit in these positions, you're also aware of the problems that you are facing and what the residents expect the roads and the systems to work and, and look like and function. And the challenge is, and I'm sure every mayor that's sitting here tonight, Liz and Jim over there, face these same obstacles of how do you pay for these roads? You know, Tracy gave an excellent example of how much it would cost to do just Aspen up to tenth. You know, Tracy gave an excellent example of how much it would cost to do just Aspen up to tenth astronomical amount of money, right? So this is another step in helping us preserve the roads we have and help maintain newer roads, right? Not only that, I think Tracy, you did in that presentation, there was fifty percent of our roads, was it fifty percent of our roads that were degraded below or something?
Seventy-four percent.
Seventy-four percent below the fifty percent mark.
Correct.
So that tells you how poor the roads are, how bad of shape they're actually in. You know, this isn't going to solve our major issue, but this is a step in the right direction. So please keep that in mind. And if you have any questions for Tracy and Janine?
I don't have any questions, but I didn't talk earlier, so I guess I'll do it now. But you know, the the state doesn't do us, as in a small city, any any favors. As was stated earlier, there's there's fees that are charged to every one of us that have vehicles, and we register them in town. And if you have a a truck, sometimes you even have to pay tonnage on it. And the state doesn't share that money at all. Well, maybe a little bit, but they don't share that money. And you know, they're full of good ideas up there in Olympia, but they're not real transparent about where that money goes and and how it helps. And I think they put, they put city councils like us in a bad spot because nobody wants to raise the sales tax. But if we don't, then where's the money come from to to repair these things? And then they further put your back up against the wall when they require certain ordinances to be passed and districts to be created in order to qualify for for grant funding, whether it be state or federal. I don't know. That's one of the reasons it's important to pay attention to who you're voting for in November when that's coming up. So.
Yes.
You bring up actually a great point, though, Casey, when you're saying that, because like Aspen right there is where the overweight limit is. And when the bridge was under construction, people were coming through and they were breaking down the road, right? And I think when we were doing the flag ceremony, we're seeing the curbs break down on the roundabout. Well, when we go to the state to ask for funding, they kind of laugh at us. They're like, no, you're not getting any money for that. Well, you see what Aspen looks like. That's caused by heavy road traffic or heavy heavy loads going up that road. So it's up to us to to maintain it. We can't even close that road off to heavy traffic because they have to have a route. And that's mandated.
Right.
You know, the the, I think a couple of the residents brought up some things at the last meeting about, you know, limiting heavy construction vehicles on certain roads and such like that. And I would encourage the council to point us in that direction because I think that's a great idea to at least examine it and take a look at it.
That was exactly what I was going to bring up next is that, you know, this this tenth of a percent that that we may decide later, because tonight's just creating the district. We're not creating it. We're not imposing the tax tonight. But you know, I I think that we owe it to everybody that before we make that decision, that we do go back and correct some of our our ordinances that that have to do with that that truck traffic and some of the stuff that was presented to us or emailed to us. And we're going to have a workshop or something. I don't know what you call it. Anyway, we're going to talk about it and hopefully, hopefully fix some of those ordinances. But yeah, I think I'm I think I'm done. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Janine or Tracy, do you have any other things you want to add to what's been spoken up here?
Yeah, I'll just say a couple of things. First of all, I want to make sure that everybody is aware, and you've said this already, that this is just creating the Transportation Benefit District. That's what this is about. After that's been created, you guys can determine whether or not you want to use it, but it's important to say that's been created. So if anybody says, do you guys have a Transportation Benefit District? You can say, yes, we do. Whether or not you collect funds from it is up to you. The one-tenth of one percent can only be used on roads if you do that. And please remember, it isn't going to anybody who is living in La Center unless they are buying product in La Center. So you also, anytime you buy product in Clark County, whether it's Clark County or in Ridgefield or wherever, Woodland, wherever, you're already paying for their Transportation Benefit District because they already impose that tax. So if you don't want to pass it, you don't want to do the one-tenth of percent for anybody who shops in La Center, that's fine. But anytime you're shopping anywhere else, you're paying it for them. So it's just something to be aware of. It's anybody who shops in La Center pays that tax. So you might as well pay your own tax since you're paying it for everybody else who's around here anyway. If you decide to impose that one-tenth of a percent, which is about sixty-five thousand dollars a year at this point, that we would be able to collect that would go to roads only. The other thing that I would say is that, you know, you talk about limiting where trucks can go in town. You have to be really careful when you say that because if you have a water truck, or if you have a fuel truck or anything else, and somebody has an oil tank or anything like that, or you want to have a septic system pumped out, and you're putting weight limits on trucks, guess what? You're not getting it pumped, you're not getting your pool filled, you're not getting whatever you do. So it while it sounds nice to say that we want a weight restriction on trucks, it doesn't make sense because those trucks have to get into town to build residence and deliver products. Your your P your parcel trucks sometimes are overweight. So if you're getting an Amazon delivery and somebody's getting some beds delivered or whatever, you got to think about that. That's all inclusive of what you're asking to put weight limits on these roads. So and anytime somebody buys something here and your contractors are having delivery of materials for a house being constructed, or if they're bringing in, you have a truck bringing in to redo a bed on a road, and there's only one way in to redo your road bed, and you're doing a full depth reclamation, now you have a weight limit on that truck, how are you going to do your road? So I I'm not a big fan of putting weight limits on your roads. I understand the residential roads, but there are people that do construction. If you say there's a weight limit on that road, how's that person going to do a remodel of their house?
Tracy, I'm going to interrupt you here real quick.
Yeah.
That's going off into a
I am going off.
Way off the topic here.
Yeah.
I want to stick to what we're talking here.
Yeah.
I do still want to explore the topic.
Yeah.
Or the 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 weight limits. I think the council wants to look at it, so it's something in the future. It's not for this conversation.
Correct. I did go off on a tangent.
Yeah.
So I'm done. That's all I have.
Yeah, I do have a real quick question. Do you do, would we have to as a council impose the one-tenth of one percent before the three-tenths goes to a vote? Or can we send it all to a vote?
No, you don't. Yeah, you don't have to do anything. You can you can send point one to the voters, you can send point two to the voters, you can send point three to the voters. The the one just gives you the authority to do it if you want to do it, but that is completely within your discretion. And so, yeah. And and the other thing to note is it's not one or the other. It can be, it can be the, you know, the fee and the the tax. I mean, there's it's it's there there's separate authorities. But no, there's nothing that says that you have to do one before you go to the voters at all.
Any other questions for Janine or Tracy?
So the only reason then to do this, Tracy, would is because that this shows that we're that we're trying to maintain our roads and that we can say, yes, we have a transportation benefit, even if we don't add a tax onto that.
Yeah, that is correct. You you will want to say that you have formed a Transportation Benefit District. And then also, if they say, then they can come back and say, well, are you collecting anything? And then you could say yes or no at that time. And they could say, okay, well, great. This is great that you formed that, but we would like to see that you're bringing in revenue. So it's just something to prepare for the future and to have it done now. So if you needed to do something right away for a multimillion dollar grant, let's say you get a multimillion dollar grant from the state or the feds for the roundabout up top, and they say, where's your money coming from for that match? You can say, we have a Transportation Benefit District, or we're taking it out of a general fund or a capital fund or whatever. You could tell them where that's coming from if you decide to do that. And you can impose it at that time if you're getting, you know, fifteen million dollars for a roundabout or whatever, you could impose it at that time if you needed to as part of the match.
Okay, thank you.
You don't have to have all the money ahead of time, so you can just start collecting right then, even when you got the grant. You don't have to do it years in advance and have the money in the account.
Well, typically what happens when you go out for a grant, you get an award. So you apply for the grant dollars, and then you get awarded. And then at that time, if you have the funding, you can go ahead. But usually, it's remember, it's reimbursable. So they they you have to sign a letter of intent to say where your money's coming from.
Right.
So if you decide to take a large grant, you don't have the revenue, but you know that you could get the the shortage that you needed from doing the Transportation Benefit District District fee, you could actually start, you can actually put that impose that tax and start collecting it for the following year to be able to make your matching funds.
How is sixty-five thousand dollars going to be a matching?
I'm just saying if it's if it you can use that as that. I'm just giving an example.
I know. I'm just saying that doesn't seem like very much, though.
No.
So they go, well.
Well, it depends on how much people spend in the city. We're doing an estimate.
Better than nothing. It looks like we're trying. I get that piece.
Well, and if you look at the million dollar, we need a hundred and fifteen thousand. That's half of it.
Sure.
And so if if you get that million dollar, I'm giving an example.
No, I totally get that. But I was just wondering, do we have?
You don't have to show the whole.
Yeah. Do we have to hurry up and start it now? So we do have a good, you know, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and, you know, eighty thousand dollars in there. So when we do get a grant, we're ready to go.
It depends on what you have in your reserves. Yeah.
Okay.
So if you have the money in your reserves and you're going for a large grant.
For reserves.
Yeah, if if council and decides to use the money in the reserves for that, you can use that.
I was not aware of that.
Yeah.
The whole point of it. Okay.
Yeah.
We're dipping in other accounts. Well, okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Tracy or Janine? All right, at this time, nine, ten PM, I would like to open up to public comments. You'd say, step up to the mic, state your name and address, and stick to the ordinance at hand, please.
Al Fella, three, six, zero, one, six, Northwest Jenny Grick Road. Hey, we had a ribbon cutting up at the Chevron Station on Saturday. I went. Some of y'all went. You know, I go around and I ask my typical questions. Is La Center business friendly? You know, actually, we did fairly well on that question. And also, these are small businesses from La Center, you know, just barely making it, you know, or making lots of money, whatever you pick and answer that. But my other question was, hey, did you know La Center's looking into raising the sales tax? And not a one of these small business owners do anything about it, of course. But also, there wasn't a one that was in favor of raising sales tax. You know, I don't know if the people that were there went around and asked those questions, but I did. And, you know, hopefully you all did your due diligence on this. You know, you heard these, you say due diligence before. And is are we business friendly? And this is all part of it. But thank you, God bless America.
Thank you, Al.
I think their customers will like it if the roads are nice when they come to visit their businesses.
Any other public comments? Please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. About anybody calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, stick to the ordinance at hand, please.
Hi, Kimberly Goheen Elbin. So just a few little quick bullet notes here. There is already too much traffic. There's too much population pollution. I'll ask the few citizens there, of which we need more citizens. That's part of the problem, and I'll speak about that in a minute. But do we really want to be a city or a town? We're in a unique area where if we grow any larger, we're going to have a five to six-story new downtown right there on that farmland, which I think should be turned into a some sort of resource center and guard, community garden, and maybe something for elderly, you know, and children to play. But we'll have more crime. We're going to need a bridge that will be a four-lane bridge. Look at that in the near future. And then you get this transportation thing. I get fixing roads, but I somehow, some way, and I'm just overwhelmed today with other family issues and things, but I'm still performing my duty to listen and participate and ask the citizens to multiply there and assemble in this. We we do like our council, we like our local government, but we want to make sure that we're not taxed to death. Clark, you mentioned Clark County. Clark County is going to tax your online purchases. They are working on it. You're going to get taxed there. You're going to get taxed for this transportation thing. We're getting taxed to death. And the bottom line is, it's it's like a a double whammy. You your hard-earned tax dollars are being used to have unelected, large government putting through all this stuff. So they're getting paid very well paid. But then on the other hand, we have to pass a levy for those individuals that actually sacrifice their lives to protect us. We have to pass a levy for our firemen and our policemen. So you guys need to figure it out. You need to assemble as our forefathers said to do in our local government. We are in big trouble if we don't. Again, they're going to tax us to death. And so the problem is, is that the public needs to assemble like our forefathers warned us to do. It's not a threat. It's just making sure that our constitution is being followed in everything that we do. We learned our lesson about taxation without representation. This is a serious matter because it's going to snowball. I'm telling you right now, we cannot have any more population pollution here in Clark County, to tell you the truth. We've been growing for forty years, for God's sake. It's enough. Let some other sanctuary city, while we try to get back our democ- our, I said democracy, our republic, for God's sake.
Thank you.
But in the meantime, thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Any other callers calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and stick to the ordinance at hand, please. Are there any other callers, clerk?
No other
Oh, sorry.
Comments, sorry.
Any public comments to be read?
Mayor?
Oh, oh, come on up, Marty. Yeah, no, come on up. Plenty of time.
Again, Marty Gustafson, sixteen seventy-nine East Titan Avenue. I think the point was well made. If we don't have a TBD here, we'll be paying in Ridgefield or any other number of places. And I think we do need it. So I would urge you to pass it. My concern, which is not for here, is that it be passed and and it's be funded fairly. You know, so if people with vehicles get taxed, how about how about bicycles? Because bicycles are going to get benefit from this. How about for vehicles that drop horse apples that stop other people from using it? So again, as long as it is the taxes imposed fairly, I support the TBD. Thank you.
Tracy, do you want to address that with him? Because we're not voting on any of that. That goes to the voters or with the vehicle tabs and such, right?
Yeah, so we have the opportunity to either do the one-tenth of one percent just by council vote, or we can put it out to vote and go up to three-tenths of a percent. And then also, we can vote just by council to impose a vehicle tax that can be used for this, or we can vote not to impose a vehicle tax, which would be on top of what they're normally paying with their vehicle relicensing. My recommendation is, I'm not a big fan of adding a vehicle tax because that just goes to the local residents here. That's my personal opinion. Mine is to always use the one-tenth of one percent, which everybody pays who shops within La Center. And it includes all shipments of shopping in La Center as well. So if you order something from Amazon or you order something from UPS or have a delivery, they pay that tax as well.
Thank you, Tracy. Any other comments from the audience? Please step up. All right. I'd like to close the public comment at nine eighteen PM. Turn this back over to council.
Nothing further?
Well, I think the beauty in this is that we're a local community. We have an open door. We have two meetings a month. You can come here where these tax dollars are being spent. You're going to see them out your front door. It's not like federal taxes where we have no ideas. Poof, what are they doing with all this money? We can see it out of our front door.
We can see it out of our front door. We're accountable for that. And you can see the improvements over time and come to hear about it. So you know, oh, yeah, I paid that. Oh, and look, look at this. Oh, that's wonderful. Instead of, oh, I paid that, but I have no clue where that money went. That's not the situation. So we all get a benefit from it. So I think it's great.
I don't think anybody sitting up here even wants a new tax. I mean, I know I don't want to pay any more taxes than what I need to.
I'd rather pay it here locally than give it to everybody else and then suffer in my own town because we don't have one. That's not cool. So.
But we're not actually passing any taxes tonight. And the other thing you got to keep in mind, you know.
Eventually, that's going to come up, obviously.
It more than likely will. And we're not always going to do the most popular thing, right? We have to look at what's best for the city. What's going to keep it moving forward in the future?
Yep, I agree. All right.
I move to approve ordinance 2024-10 as presented to add a new chapter 3.60 to the La Center Municipal Code to establish a transportation benefit district within the city and assume all district authority and obligation to the city council.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, can I get a roll call vote on this, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Leha?
Yes.
Councilmember Serbini?
Yes.
All right, motion or ordinance passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Janine and Tracy and your team. That was, it's been a lot of work. Couple meetings later, we finally got it formed. I appreciate it. Is there any unfinished business tonight, council? About any new business? Any business? Well, then can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved, second and third. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone, for attending and sticking with us tonight. I know it was a long one. That was definitely needed for the city. Have a great night.